Good afternoon and welcome. I'd like to invite the senior pastor of Messiah's House Church, and that is Senior Pastor Jason Kraft, to come give us an invocation. And I want to give you a warm welcome and say thank you.
Let's pray together. Father, we're grateful this afternoon for your presence in this place. Father, the Psalmist said, "Where can I go from your Spirit, oh Lord? Even if I make my bed in the depths, you are there." So God, we're grateful today that no matter where we go, you are always near to us. We're grateful today that we can approach your throne with confidence and we can cast our cares on you because you care for us. And Lord, we're grateful because we know you care about the city of Amarillo. And that's why we're all here today, God. And we just thank you, Lord, for this great city that we get to live in. And Lord, today my prayer is that, God, you would lead each of us by your Spirit. I pray for our city council members. I pray, God, for your grace to be on them. And I pray, God, that your plans, the plans that you have, the hope and the future that you have for our city, that those plans, those purposes, would prevail. Even if they're not necessarily ours, even if they're not popular, God, we want what you want for this city. And so lead us by your Spirit, God. I pray for wisdom and grace today. And your word tells us that a city gets exalted when the righteous give it their blessing. And so today, God, we just say, "We bless the city of Amarillo," and we're thankful for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Kraft. We appreciate that very much. And thank you for blessing us today. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And if I could ask council to come up and join me. We do have a proclamation today, and it's in recognition of Teachers' Day. And I would also like to ask if she is here, if Ms. Kimberly Anderson is here with the Amarillo Independent School Board District. She is also the board president, board president, and then also a trustee. And let me invite Mr. Loomis up, too, because I didn't realize you were back there. Oh, and we have Ms. Annette Carlyle to join us as well. And who's the other? I know. Who's the other gentleman? David Nance, that's right. And David Nance is also going to join us as well. So you guys, come on around. Come on around and back here. Whereas Amarillo's future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students. And whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, plans, and supporting students. And whereas our teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during the COVID-19 crisis. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. And whereas #TeachersCan is a statewide movement supported by more than 125 partnering businesses and organizations committed to alleviating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. And now, therefore, we mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, join #TeachersCan and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers' Day and do hereby proclaim October 5, 2021, to be Teachers' Day in Amarillo and encourage members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside your homes or businesses the week of October 5 as a symbol of support for our educators. Given under our hands and seal of office this 28th day of September, 2021, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, council members Cole Stanley, Frida Powell, Dr. Eddy Sauer, and Howard Smith. So, and here to accept the proclamation, is it going to be? Okay. Ms. Kimberly.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And we appreciate all that you all do, not only for our students but for the city of Amarillo. So we just can't thank you enough because it's a lot, and especially going through the COVID-19 crisis and trying to adjust and just do things differently and then homeschool our children, you know, at home and without Internet access. So we appreciate you so much.
Well, and we appreciate this recognition. We just regret that some actual teachers weren't able to be here. They're in classrooms with our kids right now doing their never-ending Herculean task of training our future leaders. So we appreciate this recognition for them today.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). Good afternoon. My name is Frida Powell, serving as mayor pro tem for the city of Amarillo. I want to welcome you to our regular city council meeting, which is held every other Tuesday here on the third floor in City Hall at 1:00 p.m. And so now we will move on to public address, and I would like to turn it over to Ms. Kat Massey.
Thank you. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we are glad you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items. To ensure everyone is able to speak, we limit each speaker's time to three minutes. At the end of two and a half minutes, a warning beep will sound from the dais to alert you that you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your thoughts. We ask that you stay within the three minutes allotted. Your time will begin when you begin speaking. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act and state law, speakers are asked to limit their comments to items posted on the agenda. Doing so will ensure we are following the guidelines and are able to have an effective meeting for all. Thank you for your consideration for this process and for your valuable input. First speaker we have today is Mr. James Skank. Mr. Skank, will you make your way to the podium?
Can't do a concert unless the microphone's up here. Just a second before, I mean, started now. I want to talk about the public address. Sort of disappointed that it's not on the agenda today, even though it was requested to be a part of the agenda today. I've been coming for the last three or four years, and I've seen nothing but a continual pullback of this opportunity. While you may not think so because you say, "Oh, we've got public access to y'all all the time," we never have public access to all of you at once, department heads, public here. And you've taken that to where we've had those jumps and jives where we wanted to have a meeting at 7:00 in the morning. We used to have meetings at 5:00 when more people could attend and participate in this part. And I think it's sort of an abuse of the open meeting to have it here at 1:00 because only people like myself and few people that don't have to be at work at any particular time. And I'm really concerned about why you're not interested in having an address opportunity for, other than agenda items, which it says in the open meetings that you can address other things. And that's why I've brought up the fact that I'm addressing the part about being on the agenda. And I've done that, as most of you know, for a year or more, ever since we started moving this thing around. Public speaking, public address, is to allow us to speak to all of y'all at one time so that we can actually maybe get some things moving in a direction. Sure, we can talk to you. I've already digressed a little bit. We can talk to you individually. You've seen disappointments of where people are not responded to when they email you, text you. Well, I've had texts, you text me right back, you know. But I've never had that problem myself, but some folks have. So I'm wondering when we can have it on the agenda so we can actually work on this. Can we talk at public hearings? Of course. But if you talk at public address, public comment, then you can't speak during the hearing. Well, it's a completely different subject, you know, of what we may have been talking about. And then you can't talk on an agenda item that may come up after you've talked about it. For us to talk about it before you discuss it sort of leaves us in a little bit of a limbo. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skank. That concludes our public address today.
Thank you, Kat. I appreciate that very much. Moving on to agenda, I'm sorry. Mr. City Manager, I believe you have some announcements that you would like to make?
I do. Sorry, I'll say it in the microphone. I do. We have announced a number of new employees or promotions recently of a lot of key positions throughout the city. We pretty much landed just about all the vacancies in the city manager's office and in some of our key departments right now, but we had one last vacancy we needed to fill, and that was Assistant City Secretary. So we recently announced Stephanie Coggins as our city secretary. Stephanie, give a wave. But we also now have our new Assistant City Secretary. And she, turns out, she's been serving as our interim Assistant City Secretary for some time. I want to welcome Johnny Glick. And the reason I'm introducing this position to y'all is because this is a position that's going to work very closely with y'all in a lot of different things, whether it's just answering questions, getting meetings set for y'all, or setting up travel for conferences, things like that. But Johnny has been with the city of Amarillo since 2017 as an executive assistant, Executive Administrative Assistant with Civil Operations. Prior to coming to city, she was with the Randall County Sheriff's Office for nine years, earned her bachelor's degree from WT, currently working on a master's in public administration. So definite aspirations towards bigger and better things inside municipal work. So we want to foster that. We want to further that. She's married to one of our APD sergeants, Dustin Glick. They got two sons, Lincoln and Grant. So we're looking forward to seeing what Johnny can do with us. Real excited about having her fill out, finish out the team here that's serving council directly. So just welcome Johnny when you see her next.
Is she here?
Yeah, there she is, back in the back. Johnny, come on up here and just say hi real quick. So this is really just so we can embarrass Johnny a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Welcome. In all seriousness, Johnny's been doing a lot of great things with us even prior to this. She was helping to manage the downtown parking program through the municipal courts department. So she has a lot of experience. She has a lot of good skills at interacting with people, as you can imagine, working with parking, downtown parking. So she's really going to bring a lot of good skills to the city secretary's office.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Really appreciate that and want to say, "Welcome aboard to the team." Moving on to Agenda Item 1A, which is review agenda items for regular meeting and attachments. Council, are there any concerns or questions in regards to today's agenda items? Okay, no. Moving on to Item 1B, discuss update on mayor's leadership initiative. Mr. City Manager?
All right. Well, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. I am in the position of speaking for the mayor right now, so I really don't want to misspeak. But one thing that we are really excited about right now, and working with the mayor and with a number of key staff, we have submitted an application to be selected as one of the very few cities to be able to participate in the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative. So to even be considered, you have to submit a substantial application kit that includes narrative and other things. We were reviewed among, I don't know the exact number, I know 40 cities were selected worldwide, 26 inside the United States and 14 internationally. But this is a flagship program from Bloomberg Center for Cities at Harvard University. It offers leadership and management training to 40 mayors from around the world, along with some key staff. The Harvard Leadership Initiative focuses on teaching leadership, organizational and problem-solving capabilities. It doesn't focus on specific policy recommendations. It's apolitical. It's a nonpartisan process. Now, the name Bloomberg would indicate otherwise. However, this is an initiative that is near and dear to his heart, also to Harvard's heart, and also to my heart. So learning better ways to be able to lead and provide effective management for a community, that's important to mayors, that's important to the city managers and others. Mayor supports the programs, help them to build and support high-performing teams, increase leadership and management capacity in the city, communicate with constituents and key partners, which I think is huge. You know, being able to better communicate with your community and with your team and with your constituents is a huge skill, and it's not native to most people. Using data to increase transparency, make better decisions, manage performance, effectively innovate by prototyping, implementing quickly, and learning from failure, and working across silos to break down barriers to collaboration within City Hall and across the city. It's going to have, it's a year-long program, has in-person and virtual sessions, taught by the Harvard Business School and the Harvard Kennedy School faculty. Helps mayors and senior leaders step back from day-to-day responsibilities and focus on personal leadership and organizational practices within the city. There's a lot of different things that are hugely beneficial to this process, but this is a very prestigious program to be selected to. We are in amongst a lot of cities from across Kentucky, Tennessee. There's 40 cities in the United States. And I'm sorry, I meant to have a list in front of me to tell you about it, but it's also got, from Bogota, Columbia, 8 million people. You know, over half the cities have more than 200,000 people, but about half the cities have less than 200,000 people. So we're right in the middle of the size of cities that are participating in this process, from Mannheim, Germany, to, you know, like I said, Bogota, Columbia, to all over the United States, Green Bay, Wisconsin, you know, it's just all over the place. So it's a really neat opportunity to develop leadership skills in and through one of the most respected leadership training facilities in the United States and in the world. So it's a neat opportunity for us, for our organization. And once we're done, everyone in our organization, our department heads, our assistant city managers, our, anybody with a challenge or an opportunity that dovetails with one of the topics we've discussed, will be able to leverage the continuing education opportunities that will be available to us through the Harvard program now that we are alumnus of this program.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any questions I can answer for council? Understanding that I've only been through one virtual session so far, and there's a lot yet left to do.
Isn't that where the mayor is today?
That is where the mayor is today. So the mayor regrets not being able to be here, but I think she is absolutely gainfully employed on our city's benefit right now.
Any other questions, council? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 1C, discuss public arts and beautification plan. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. I've got Michael Kishuba. He's going to come up, and he's really going to touch on the next two items, the Public Arts and Beautification Plan, also the Hike and Bike Master Plan. So he'll just stand still while he goes through one and moves on to the other. But till presented, we've also got consultant here if necessary. However, are y'all doing these plans as well? Okay. So you're doing all three. So this is the Parks Master Plan. So these plans are standalone plans, but they are also integral to how we put together the Parks Master Plan. So there's a reason why we're talking about them all three on the same day. And these two will be up for consideration and adoption or approval at the following council meeting on October 12. Michael?
Correct. Mayor Pro Tem, Council, Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Recreation. As the city manager mentioned, last week, we discussed the Parks Master Plan. It is on your agenda today for adoption in the non-consent portion. But what we wanted to do today was kind of walk through the Public Arts and Beautification Plan and also the Hike and Bike Plan. Our consultant, MIG Cindy, will actually walk through those very briefly. But I think before we get to that, I wanted to make some acknowledgements of the staff and the time and effort that's gone into this. So on the Public Arts and Beautification, their advisory board has been very engaged in the process. So we have the staff liaison, Sherman Bass, back there. We also have their current board chair, Andy Wardlaw, who's here. They also formed a special subcommittee to review this portion of the plan. And obviously, we have our council liaison, Mr. Dr. Eddy Sauer. On the hike and bike portion, we've been engaged with the Pedestrian and Bikeshock Safety Advisory Committee with staff liaison, Donnie Hooper, their board chair, Steve Rogers, former board chair, Ms. Angela Harney, and then the council liaison, Mr. Howard Smith. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of those groups that have been a part of developing these plans. And with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Ms. Cindy Mendoza, and she can walk through kind of the presentation.
Welcome back, Cindy.
Thank you so much. My honor to be here today to present to you the draft Public Arts and Beautification Plan. As you see on the screen before you, the purpose of this plan is really to strengthen and coordinate city initiatives around public arts and beautification, to really focus on the opportunity to implement things that will not only beautify the community but also respect and show the cultural heritage and art of this community. The draft plan that you have in front of you consists of five different sections that are defined here on this slide, really giving a general introduction as well as an assessment of community priorities around arts and beautification, and then focusing on some of the key trends that are, we're seeing across the nation in the provision of arts in particular as well as beautification projects, before we talk about strategies and actions and an implementation plan for the future. There are two appendices, an inventory of arts, that is, an initial inventory that the city can build from as they start to look at different art projects. And there's also additional information with regards to worldwide public art trends, just for consideration. The planning process included six different phases, as already noted by your city manager. It did overlap with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So where it focused on community engagement and the inventory and needs assessment, those directly overlapped with similar tasks and were able to establish some efficiencies in that way with the Parks Master Plan. We did have very strong involvement from the Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board, and their guidance helped form and shape not only the strategies and actions that are here, but as well as that action and implementation plan. The community had opportunities to weigh in on, to really help shape the priorities. And we became clear in understanding that while they want to focus on beautification in terms of overarching priorities, we needed to make sure that that was aligned with the funding priorities of the city. So certainly, supporting beautification projects are key, but it also looks at ways to integrate that, such as integrating arts with play opportunities that are important. So looking at the synergies between recreation, arts, and beautification. As we note in Trends, you know, art is changing across the community. Originally, public art was really focused on things such as murals and statues and sculptures in communities. Nowadays, it ranges from websites to pop-up events and activities, events, and even beautification projects that are artistic in some way, such as the butterfly garden that you see there on the slide, or even the way that we repurpose underutilized spaces to make them more attractive for the community. So the focus on the strategies and actions, and there really is only four key strategies because we wanted to simplify this. And the whole intent is to look at the way we can create a sustainable arts and beautification program, recognizing that there's little funding at this point to move towards it. So the first strategy is really about how do we start to initiate a sustainable program? You know, where do we even begin? And that really focused on what are the staffing and funding resources that are needed to get this off of ground and to sustain it moving forward. So we focused on things such as bringing on a new staff position, which is also noted, by the way, in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And then talking about a nonprofit or foundation that then could continue to raise funds and connect with partners and establish those public-private partnerships that would support the arts. And then finally, looking eventually at a 1% for arts ordinance that, again, can continue to contribute the funding needed to move it forward, so it's not drawing off of general fund dollars. So the second strategy was more so around how to inspire and grow connections and relationships with the existing art community. So those actions really focused on things like the installation of a few new art projects and how we coordinate and even know what groups are out there to coordinate with in the provision of arts. And then the third strategy did the same thing with regards to beautification. What relationships can we establish? Can we create friends groups or even augment and adopt a park program? You know, how do we create potentially a youth corps where through internships or volunteers you can get youth involved in beautifying the park system? And then looking at that fourth strategy, it was more so about now that we're getting things off the ground and have fostered these initial relationships, where do we go next? And so that strategy talks about can we take an artist census to know who the artists are in the community moving forward? Can we develop a webpage that then would further connect and unite all of the different efforts in the city around arts? And so that leads us to the strong implementation piece, because really, as we worked with the advisory board, their focus was on, you know, how do we make this work? And so providing the how, the understanding of those implementation measures is really important. So a lot of the plan is devoted to that. So either forming a nonprofit, there's guidance there. There's guidance with regards to what might be needed for that dedicated art staff position. There's guidance on the 1% for the arts ordinance, and even a three-year action plan. And the plan really does end with that three-year action plan that on this slide is really consolidated into one table. And the key thing I want you to realize is, we use the same funding assumptions that you have already provided for arts and beautification. That is, there's about a $60,000 year investment, $30,000 in arts, $30,000 in beautification. And in year one especially, that would continue. There's an excellent mural program that is already underway that would continue, continuing to expand on the beautification tree planting programs and even the park cleanups and things that we heard about last time I was here, and even more so in the community today. Then in year two, same amount of funding but reallocating it towards creating that arts and beautification staff position, with the staff then able to start to mobilize efforts to expand funding and resources for the arts. And then in the third year, that's where you bring in the 1% for the arts ordinance, so that, again, brings in different funding sources, you start new fundraising initiatives, there's more of an understanding of the partnerships and relationships, then to really move forward on a couple of new art installations, programs, and beautification projects. So it's a fairly simple strategy, but again, instead of just focusing on individual projects, really identifies how to reallocate resources to expanding and sustaining an art program. And I'm going to pause there. We can move right into the Bike and Hike Plan if you prefer, or we can take some quick questions around the Arts and Beautification Plan first before we continue.
Okay. Council, yes, do you have any questions for Ms. Mendoza?
Okay, so this third, this third part where we're talking about establishing a 1% arts ordinance, so if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, this is really a very modest number compared to what a lot of cities are considering whenever that comes up. And even though that's down the road, if I remember correctly, a lot of will have a 2% or 2.5% kind of a, this kind of thing set up instead of a 1%. Is that correct?
Excellent point. It does vary city to city. And I probably should have mentioned that supporting this art plan was John Grant of Public Art Services, who does this work across the United States. And so he did want to set up a very conservative strategy. The 1% he felt was doable. And especially when you recognize the synergies that we're seeing that the community would like, in between how those funds are spent and how Parks and Rec, for example, are supported, it can be, for example, this 1% invested in, if it's associated with park development, a new play area that has integrated art pieces, whether it's, you know, a shelter or interactive play opportunities. There's flexibility in how that's spent. play opportunities, there's flexibility in how that's spent. But yes, to your point, Mr. Sauer, it is very conservative.
And also, whenever you're considering something like this, this 1% arts ordinance, exactly who is going to be considered, I guess, subject to that ordinance?
So this-
How, is that planned out at this point in time yet? Or does it vary? And what, where do you start?
It has not been determined at this time. Some cities require 1% of all future construction work to be dedicated towards arts to support that. So hypothetically, if you built a new community center, that 1% of that project would be devoted towards beautification and integrating art within that project. So there are several different ways noted in the plan to move that forward. At this point, no definitive decisions have been made about that.
Yeah, so, and it's still down the road before that's even, and it's not necessarily written in stone at this point in time.
Exactly. It is a strategy that's intended in the longer term to help moving things forward, recognizing that the first step is to get that staffing and build those relationships with other private entities first.
Okay, thank you.
Council?
Yeah, just in clarification on that, because I know there's lots of things that are unestablished and will be brought. Everything that would be recommended or brought comes back to council in the normal format. So the 1%, if it was a 1% of all new construction cost, or if we limited it to new, or if we said, you know, rehab or whatever, that would be something that would come back through the process.
Indeed, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so moving on with regards to the hike and bike plan. Again, with this plan, it provides a long-range vision, guidance, and strategies with regards to not only walking and biking opportunities, but all future trail development. So that includes on-street opportunities, so bike routes on the entire bike system, as well as off-street. So this is an interesting collaboration between Public Works and the Parks and Recreation Department. And just before I get into it, we'll point out that there are trail strategies in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, but those are more limited to what that department would provide. This plan is more focused on how do we bring all groups together in the city to advance our knowledge of how to implement trails. So that would require collaboration between multiple departments. So this plan really includes three separate pieces beyond the introduction. It does create this new trails vision, as well as establishing strategies and actions then for implementation. And then it also carries forward from the earlier hike and bike plan, the trail design standards that were provided previously. The planning process, similar to before, overlapped with the Park and Recreation Master Plan to develop synergies in the way we were bringing together information with regards to community outreach and the involvement of our advisory groups. This time, the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Committee took a really important lead in helping us understand what they wanted to see out of this plan, but then also working with the Parks Board and a subset of that, the Strategic Planning Subcommittee, to help refine this into something that's more practical. There was a huge conversation around trails, and actually, earlier in the planning process with the needs assessment, we paused and brought some key findings to council in that regard. And I believe the mayor at that time and others echoed the importance of trails in this community. We've presented state data as well as city outreach data that shows that trail demand is among the highest-desired park and recreation opportunities. It is increasing, particularly since the pandemic initiated, where walking and biking has nearly doubled in this area alone. And then we heard from the community desire, not only for trails that are connecting the community to different destinations, but even walking and biking opportunities in parks, such as loop trails or mountain biking opportunities, or BMX bike courses, for example. So this plan covers all of those, but really starts with this key vision that comes from a few different places. It draws from the guidance that we had from the advisory board, who really wanted to see what's the big concept that we want to reach towards. This is not a 10-year thing, this is not a 20-year thing, it is a future vision that you will be working on for some time. And it recognizes the fact that we really would like to connect those regional parks that you have in the city to improve opportunities to walk and bike to those regional parks. It includes those spines, it includes some connectors to the regional park system that extends beyond the city, it has a vision for a destination loop around the trail, which is probably the most visionary aspect of it. And then within that, shorter neighborhood connectors, trails that are more natural resource-oriented, so nature trails for interpretation, and even things such as the BMX bike parks and trails in that regard. And while we pushed for this big trails vision, we wanted to be able to bring it to the ground to some extent, recognizing that a key part of this will be through Public Works, where actual alignments and routes are vetted in detail, is part of your non-motorized transportation focus. So with that, the first strategy is around this trails vision, and how we break it apart into the different pieces and different classifications of bicycle trails and this hierarchy that we have. So it establishes that hierarchy, it defines the different trail types to move forward, and it really talks about that future coordination that's needed for implementation. The next strategy talks about the fact that to achieve that, we need to start to vary trail surfaces. We're talking about hard and soft surface trails, again, on-street bike routes to nature trails, and really looking at the ways that we vary the trail experiences, knowing that not everybody is using it for a non-motorized commute, for example. There's a lot of different reasons that people wanted us to enhance trails across the city. So then the third strategy is focused on the off-street trail corridors and greenways and opportunities. And the reason we broke this out is so this one focuses on things that the Parks and Recreation Department might find in their purview, for example, really is those greenway corridors, the trailheads that they would provide to connect people to the trail system, as well as those opportunities that are within parks. And then we immediately followed that up with a strategy that focused more on the on-street opportunities, and that way, that would be something that is more in the Public Works Department purview. So it's more of a transportation planning element that focuses on how you use street rights of ways to improve public access. And then the fifth one is around how do we prioritize projects, recognizing that we have multiple different types of trails, different departments working together. So we looked at how we wanted to establish those priorities by extending what is already there, for example, and then by looking at the way that we want to connect to the people who may more strongly need opportunities for bike commute, for example, such as your disadvantaged communities, and then even establishing safe routes to schools and safe routes to parks. And then as the sixth strategy, it looked at the way that where's further coordination, not just amongst the city, but with the regional entities, such as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, as well as the two counties. The MPO actually did a plan that had some non-motorized trail elements in it, so we were coordinating with that, and then looking at public-private partnerships. Seven looks at the support amenities that need to be provided to support trail use, and Eight really focuses on the activation of the trail system, how it supports different types of programs, activities, wayfinding signage, the bike maps that would need to be provided. So those are the strategies and actions that boil down to a shorter list of priority projects for implementation, such as completing the Ninth Avenue Bike Park and Bike Trails that you probably have already heard about, extending the existing Rock Island Trail, especially to expand it to regional parks, focusing on the citywide bike network, and then really looking at things such as Tornado Alley BMX Raceway, again, to augment existing facilities to support bike needs in a cost-effective way. It ends with an overview of funding resources. The beauty of trails planning is that funding can come from transportation funds, as well as from park and recreation funds, and then there's a variety of funding sources on many different levels to draw from to implement these projects. So the plan ends by pointing that out. And that is the overview of the drafts of the two plans. Again, we appreciate your comments, which we will take back and use to refine the plans before we bring finals to you.
Council, any questions on the hike and bike plan?
I got a couple. Okay, so I'm kind of curious, because I was looking at this plan, at that page, it's got the, all the trails were potential. So you guys have already, with the city's help and streets' help, have made the connection between the Central Business District, and that's, and that's really pretty neat. Tina and I did that maybe a week and a half ago. We went all the way, since we live in Bivens, went and got on there, went all the way, came all the way actually here to City Hall and could turn around and go back. And I think it's a really great opportunity. My question is, is how do you make that work? Because you've got connecting to John Stiff Park by going down Coulter. How do you make that work?
And that's one of the key challenges of a vision plan. And again, there were lots of conversations around this, because the board really wanted us to include this grand vision. We recognize that there are some key questions on how it will be implemented, and it probably requires a lot of on-street coordination. As streets redevelop, there's an opportunity to include either off-street trails or divided trails, so they're separate from the roadway, but still on the street. It's going to take a lot of work, especially coordination with the transportation plan, to be able to sort out how exactly to make some of those connections.
Well, and like the MPO situation, so I can remember coming on council and going to a, not the MPO meeting, but going to a TechDOT meeting, and they were talking about a section of the Loop, and you've got the Loop on here, basically, and that section had already been determined several years ago, and we were at a point of no return of going back to try and put, putting a bike lane or that kind of thing into it. And thank goodness, we've gotten into this section over here, that that's actual part of the consideration. So how do we work with TechDOT? How do we go backwards? How do we recreate the things that were already put in place, like that section along Hollywood? How do you create that part so that now that we've got the ability for that part of town to be able to bike through there? So I think there's, so does this plan help us with that? Or do the guys, does our, our streets and Public Works, do they already have an idea of how they address that? Or, I mean-
And maybe I should step aside and let them-
Everybody wants to jump up. It helps us forward, it doesn't necessarily help us backward. One of the reasons we're doing this was brought to us, and y'all were aware, by some challenges we had on the west side of the Loop 335, when we, when we were going through the planning phase of the Helium section of 335. And we realized that the bike pad, the pedestrian bicycle infrastructure that was going to be there was going to be pretty narrow, and only on one side of the, of the highway. And that's because, that's what our bike and pedestrian plan called for, that we adopted back in 2005, I think it was. Is that correct? 2005?
Yeah.
And so we immediately began this whole process that is now finally culminating. It is not a quick process, but now, we have guidance going forward. So TechDOT responds to whatever your hike and bike master plan says when they design future sections. So as we go farther to the north and, and then around, back towards 287, those segments that have not yet been designed, now that we are adopting this, potentially adopting this October 12th, will take into account the new standards that are articulated in this document, whether they're Ashto standards or whatever, which is a TechDOT standard, or ours end up being unique standards that are better than what we used to have, that's yet to be determined. But it does not help us backward. Now, any changes that we're going to make to that would rely upon them either needing to make major changes to their infrastructure-
Right.
-or our, or our funding of something like that. And I wanted to also note, because we mentioned a lot of potential funding sources, does not obligate any of them to fund anything.
Right, right.
So don't read this as city and county funds, in addition to all these other things, are going to change Coulter. Coulter is an aspirational identification of a, of a useful route to connect trail systems to major parks. There's a lot of different ways that we could do it. We could use some of the trash truck routes on the grass on the east side of Coulter. We could use share rows, which it's way too fast of a speed limit to use share rows, really. We could use lane diets, road diets, things like that, but it's a high-volume road, so that might not work. I'm just saying, there's a lot of meat left on that bone, and we don't have the answer. We're not projecting or representing that we have the answer. So we don't want anybody to read this and say, oh no, they're going to shrink Coulter. That's not what we're doing. We're just saying, that's an ideal route to get people from other major parks and other trail systems to John Stiff Park. So it's an aspirational statement, and maybe it changes, maybe it goes through neighborhoods, maybe it does a lot of things, but this is just a, a aspirational statement of something that would make our trail system much more robust.
Well, I think part of the reason that I wanted, wanted to kind of bring it up and for us to talk about it is because this, this little piece that we're doing, if we want to call it a little piece of hike and bike, it has ramifications that actually affect what the MPO does, how they look Metropolitan Planning Organization, what they do, what we do, how we do streets going forward, how we're looking at things. And this was actually, even though it may seem like it's a small document, it's actually going to be a relatively powerful document on exactly how we handle transportation in the city of Amarillo going forward. And so it's, I think these are things that I hope people will look at and look through that and go, well, how are we going to do that? And what are the plans going to be? And how do we work through those plans? And I can tell you right now, this was kind of started when, 2017, when we, when we first got on, and so here we are five years later, and we're just now getting to having a document. And now then, how much more time will it take going forward as the document actually creates life? And that's, that's going to be, so it, but what I would tell you is, I think that this is maybe one of the, one of the most impactful documents as far as transportation goes in the city of Amarillo, believe it or not.
Well, and I think just to add one thing, I mean, this is an aspirational plan. It gives us the framework of making those key connections. Now, again, there's a lot of coordination between MPO and between Public Works and Parks and Streets, and actually implementing this, and it may not be the final alignment, but at least we're thinking about those projects and those connections from a different standpoint. So, you know, whether it's on Coulter, whether it's on another street, you know, those are things that we can now start to figure out those solutions. I think this is just, we know we need these major connections, and then it's a matter of figuring out how those connections work together. If you don't have a plan and you're doing a road project, you're probably not going to consider bike lanes or other modes of transportation. And so it's just a way to kind of group and get all of those thoughts on one document, and then it's a matter of integrating it into a multitude of different projects. And whether it's the thoroughfare plan, whether it's the MPO's plan, ultimately, this is kind of the big-picture vision, and then the implementation will come in other things as well. So this is highly aspirational, but I think it's something that we can start to move towards.
And I think some of it's not necessarily aspirational, like using Seventh and Eighth. That was a brilliant idea to just go ahead and stripe them. They're relatively low-use streets, and it's, it's an excellent way and a very safe way if you want to ride a bike and get downtown. It's, it's a really great opportunity. So I hope that some of this, kind of, we have that opportunity for it to come to life, maybe sooner than later.
Yeah. And I don't know, Donnie, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I could see him back there twitching.
Well, I don't know if it's twitching, but I love that you said that, and this is exactly why we wanted to touch every part of this plan with every different group that's working separately from each other, to get them working together, because we knew that that was something the Bike and Pedestrian Committee wanted to do, was touch Rails to Trails, which is a park piece, to downtown Hodge Town. So we had the transportation piece of that, and we put that together. And I think the conversations that started this were, well, we need to make sure that what we do is, is in compliance with what they're wanting to do in the parks, and that they all touch each other, even all the way out to the MPO, so that it can be a creative network all the way together. And some of that stuff, we're not going to be able to do overnight. Coulter is a big challenge, but when you have parks to deal with, you have other pieces of property, you can come up with other ways to connect all of that stuff together. So to me, that's what all of this plan is about, is just working together, three different entities, or three different boards working together to reach a common goal, is what it is. And the downtown piece was easy, because it is low-traffic, and it was something that we wanted to reach out there and try to, try to do that and see what would happen. And I think it's going to be successful to take on bigger projects like that.
So you have some other low-hanging fruit that would be available to be able to make that bike and pedestrian part much more accessible here in town?
Absolutely. And you can get now from Hodge Town all the way back And you can get now from Hodge Town all the way back around to Johnson, all the way to 15th, back around to Rails that way. And then you can also go Seventh and Eighth and get back to it there, all the way to Coulter. So we have a pretty large corridor that you can hike and bike on now that's, that's using street infrastructure.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And I appreciate all the work, because I know Howard has been real instrumental on that committee and has helped get this pushed through. And I really, really appreciate that a lot.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions for Michael Kusuba or Ms. Mendoza, council? Great presentation.
This is due today?
It's on the consent agenda.
No, no, the, the Parks Master Plan will be adopted today, or will be considered today. These two plans, the beautification and the pedestrian bicycles master plan, will be on for consideration October 12th. So this is purely informational. So if you have any, if you review, if you review these plans and you'd like to see some changes, please let us know. And we will have those discussions for council on the 12th prior to consideration.
In the hike and bike master plan on page 10, 6E, it lists things such as City of Canyons Trail, Lake Meredith Trails, Powder Canyon. I'd like to head crossbar, right?
Yep, yep. That's an easy ad, and that's a, that's a great ad. That's a, that's looking at, looking forward, looking around corners. So that's good stuff. That's easy to put in. We'll make sure and get it in there.
And it is a really big deal, because MPO is talking about hike and bike and how it affects every time that we meet. They've got something that has to go with that. So I, I appreciate that this has then changed that conversation and will actually make it more robust for us going forward. So I, I think this is a really great, a really great thing.
And for anyone looking, MPO means Metropolitan Planning Organization, which, no, no, I'm not saying that to, to, just to provide a little bit of extra light. The Metropolitan Planning Organization focuses on all of our transportation methods and planning for it, so that we can, our transportation infrastructure can keep up with our growing community. The Metropolitan Planning Organization also focuses on multi, multiple modes of transportation. So you look at multimodal transportation plans, that's what this, that's what they do. So it's not just looking at cars, and we are a very vehicle-centric, very automobile-centric area. And you can see by the fact that we have 106, 106 square miles and only just over 200,000 people in the, in the incorporated city area. And, you know, whatever the number is, in two counties, quarter million, something like that. The, there is a focus through the MPO and through the state and federal funding sources on multiple modes of transportation that we have not historically been focused on. So it is a long lift, a heavy lift for us to adequately service all of those other modes of transportation as the federal transportation and state transportation authorities would, would have us do. So that's why it's got to be part of our plan.
Okay, Mr. Kusuba and Ms. Mendoza, thank you so much for that great presentation. Appreciate all your work, your efforts on this project. Moving on to agenda items, so that covers agenda items 1C and 1D. So we're going to move on to agenda item 1E, discuss recap of 2021 National Cleanup Day. Mr. City Manager.
All right, we've got Director of Public Works, Donnie Hooper. I also see Assistant Director Alan Harder out there, who was a key part of this project, project as well. Before I give it to Donnie, I want to say that we had a lot of people, this is not a city. I mean, it, we, we did participate, but this is a, an initiative, an effort that doesn't happen without a lot of people. We had a lot of city staff participate. I see the Yalaman Chilis out here. They are big movers and shakers in our community and their passion, if I don't want to put words in your mouth. But their passion is helping to keep, clean our city up. And without people like that, you know, we don't have the community support for things like this. So we had neighborhoods participating, we had residents participating, we had employees participating, we had leaders like Donnie and Alan participating. So we've allotted seven minutes and 23 seconds for, for Donnie to give this presentation.
You remember that.
That's not a random number, because apparently he's test-run this presentation, and I asked him, how long do you need? He said seven twenty-three.
Seven minutes, 23 seconds. I didn't think you'd remember that, so.
So just as confirmation, Donnie, that's what was told to me.
Yeah, start the timer. Good afternoon. He's right, there's so many people to thank. I do want to mention a couple before we start the presentation. One is Alan Harder. Behind the scenes, what he did to put this event together on our side was amazing. He spent literally a month and a half putting together the operational portion of this. Stephanie Coggins, who, as I mentioned at the last meeting, was over in our department at the time, and she spent a lot of time on this together. Emily Kohler in the Planning Department, along with Tori and their staff, they put a lot of time into this as well. What we wanted to do is we wanted to participate as a city in a different way than, than Mr. Yalaman Chili participates. He is, they have such a great organization, him and his lovely wife who are here today. And theirs is more of a litter control campaign. Ours was more of a big bulky item pickup. We thought if we could assist in that way, come together, they could have their cleanup, and we could have another cleanup. And we could really attack this thing from all angles and get some things done. So we really wanted to work with them to do that. I'm going to speak today on behalf of what we did as far as the cleanup is concerned and let you know what, what we had with that. So if you look at this first slide here, this is how much equipment we dedicated to this event. We had 29 pieces of equipment that we put on the streets, and we drove a total of 708.69 miles. This is in a four-hour time period, too, by the way. And when we did do some of that on Friday, we had a couple of hours on Friday, the street department worked on Friday. They had finished up with some things they were doing. They said, can we go ahead and get an early start? And we said, sure. So they did a couple of things on Friday. But we had nine dump trucks, three front-end loaders, three one-ton trucks. A one-ton truck is, is like a dump truck, but it has a flat dump bed on it, and it's, it's like a pickup with a dump bed on it. Seven of our knuckle boom trucks, three rear loaders, three brush trucks, and one roll-off truck. So what we also had was 32 roll-off containers. Republic Services donated 24 to this cause. We mapped those out. Part, another thing that, part of Alan's job that he did was map out locations for all these roll-off containers all over the entire city. We had 24 of those from them. We delivered 13 of those to the landfill. Unfortunately, there were 11 of those that came back from Republic that were empty. There was nothing in them. So it, it gave us a conversation piece to talk about after the event, too, and after-action items of what we can do to better place those, maybe put them all together and some things like that. We had eight containers that we placed out, and all eight of those came back empty. So we know that out of 32, we ended up with 13 that had something in it. So we have some work to do there for the next event, and we already have some pretty good ideas. And even in talking with the volunteer organizers, they had some great ideas of how we can better utilize those next time. So we'll be looking forward to that. As far as the volunteers are concerned, we had a total of 115 volunteers. There's a sideways picture of, I don't know why they end up sideways on there when they're straight up and down on my presentation, but that's Andrew Freeman that's sideways on that shot on the left side there, picking up trash upside down in an alley. But 115 volunteers, and when I talked about Emily and Tori, this is what they did, is they reached out to the neighborhood planning groups, and they said, hey, put together some volunteer teams. The four organizers of those groups said, we will get volunteers for you. So they did do that. We break that down into groups and show you what they had as far as individual, if I can get it to change. That's probably going to do that. You want to just change that to the next slide? Can you do that for me? We had 45 from the Barrio Neighborhood Association. That's a picture of all them at the event. And go to the next slide. This is a route that we put together for the Barrio. And if you look at this, this is, you'll see two different colors here. There's green and there's blue. The green is what our, our vehicles were able, our equipment was able to cover in that neighborhood. We did 52% of the routes that were pre-established before the event. It left us with 48%, and we'll have to start working on the coming weeks. And we have a map of each of these quadrants that we, we put together that shows these percentages. And you'll see then the areas that were a little bit more clean than others, we were able to make more progress. We put the same amount of equipment in each, each area, each of the four areas. We were able to do a lot in the Barrio, but that's thanks to them getting out there and getting a lot of this stuff cleaned up ahead of time. So we're really pleased with that number. Next slide is the North Heights Advisory Association. There had, they had 10 that participated in that. I might mention, too, I think every group had two representatives from the police department in, in every group that was out there. So we thank them for that. Next slide, this shows us what we were able to complete in North Heights. It was less. We were only able to do 25% in North Heights. The green is what we completed there, but we still had 75% of that to complete in the coming weeks. We have crews that are working there now. They've been working all week. So that number has changed since then. We've probably completed another 10% since the end of this event. So that's another thing that a big cleanup like this does for us, is it identifies where we need to be and what we need to be doing with those, those alley crews. So we continue to work there. Next slide is the East Ridge Neighborhood Group. We had 40 participants there. Approximately, that picture only has about 20 in it, but they had more show up when they got out there and started doing the work. East Ridge, we were only able to complete on the next slide, you'll see, only able to percent, do 14% of the routes. There were a couple of reasons for that. One was that far northwest side, we were supposed to start a route there, and we had a medical issue with one of our drivers. So he had to be pulled off of it, so we didn't get to start that route. And then there was a lot of inventory in East Ridge. So we also identified that, and those that worked in that area reported back to us that, hey, there are some major concerns over there. So now we have some, some good areas that we can go start working in there. We have crews working over there as we speak as well. San Jacinto, next slide, had 20 that showed up there. And we're working there with, and you see the junior high students that are on the left there that are working with us. Next slide shows that we were able to complete 63% in San Jacinto. 37% of that's left over there. I drove through San Jacinto, my staff, in fact, it was Stephanie and Alan, we drove through there about two months ago. And we inventoried a big portion of San Jacinto, and we started working some of those work orders in that area prior to this event. So you can see what that does for us, and we got 63% done. That's the most we were able to complete out of any of the four segments. So the next pictures are some of the volunteers, just kind of go through that. Just want to show the volunteers out working. On the next slide, you'll see somebody that has a, a sprayer there. They have a pressurized sprayer that they go around. This was actually funded through the neighborhood plan funds. So they were out cleaning sidewalks, cleaning curbs, and that was kind of a neat piece to add to it as well. The next one is my favorite slide of all. We had 13 roll-off containers. This was 11.9 tons that were collected by hand. This was all the volunteers collected, 23,800 pounds. That's a lot. And you have a lot of mattresses, you have a lot of couches, different things that are heavy items that they picked up. That was 100% of the work completed by the volunteers, so hats off to them. The largest percentage of that came from East Ridge. The most containers of the event came out of East Ridge. Our city equipment, those 29 vehicles, we collected 60.7 tons, which is 121,400 pounds. If you combine all that together, 72.6 tons, which is 145,200 pounds. And you see all those vehicles right there? The average weight of a, of a compact car is 3,000 pounds. So that is equivalent to 48 compact cars that we collected on a four-hour period on a Saturday. So I think that's outstanding. I want to show what that looks like on the next slide. This is what it looks like inside the transfer station. This was a bay that we dedicated just to this event only. So the first slide is a couple of people separating tires. Every tire that came in, they had to pull that out as they were being dumped out of there, because we can't have that go out to the landfill. Next slide shows Will's, the Smith boys, as we call them, Will Smith and Justin Smith. Will is our superintendent of solid waste, and Justin's our customer service rep. Send it to show you how large that pile is. And then we had a third slide just to show you, that was at the end of the day. That was right at about 12:15 when I took that picture. And you can see the amount of debris that we took out of the alleys. But to me, the other part of that story is you see this large pile of debris, but you also see what was left in the percentage of things there. There's a lot of inventory that's still out there. So we've got a lot of work to do in front of us. Next slide, I wanted to answer a couple of questions for y'all. There's, this question has come up from, from several council members, several citizens as well. Why do we not use knuckle boom trucks in the alleys? This knuckle boom truck, if you look at that, and it's got tree limbs above it, it has power limbs, I'm sorry, power lines above it. It has, there's, and the next picture's got a gas meter in it as well, as you can see, and a fence and a telephone pole, all right there together. That shot right there, that small amount of debris took us almost 30 minutes to clean up. Whereas we can go in a front yard and clean up those tree limbs in less than four minutes. So you can see a huge difference in what we have to do in the alleys versus the front. And that's why we have a front yard collection program in place that we think is being successful. So that, I'm just so proud of what we put together this year. That's a lot of tonnage. That's a lot of things that are off the, off of our plate, but we still have a lot of work to do, and we realize that. And we're going to continue to go through this. We do plan on, well, we'll tell you this, we had an after-action meeting with all of the coordinators from all of the different, the four different groups that we worked with. Took all of their input in. Meeting ended up lasting about an hour of things that they thought would help next time, grouping up the roll-off containers together, placing restrooms, porta-potties that are out there in the, in the work area. So it had so many good things came out at the meeting. So I think we got a little momentum. We're going to gather back up, start planning for the spring, and we'll do another one. We want to make sure, too, that we don't interfere with big events such as the Tri-State Fair Parade. We think that was a, something that hampered us a little bit as far as volunteers are concerned. And I know that Bob G feels the same way about that. So we're going to schedule our bulk cleanup at a separate time, even next September. We'll do it at a different time when it's not a back-to-school shopping day, or it's not a Tri-State Fair Parade day. We'll do better planning on that so we can have the maximum amount of volunteers that we can, we can gather up for that. So that's the presentation. If you have questions or comments, I'd be glad to take them.
Donnie, this is awesome, just unbelievable how much trash and garbage was collected. So as, this is an ongoing process, correct? And so.
It is.
Right now, you guys will just continue to work in each of the different neighborhoods to, the, the cleanup is going to continue, right?
Oh, absolutely. There's two things we're going to focus on right now. We're focused on finishing up where we left off. That's why we created the route, so that we would know exactly where we left off, exactly where we continue. There's actually three things. So there's that. Second, there's education about our front yard collection program. We've got to get that stuff out of the alleys. Then third is the enforcement piece that we're using now with our cameras and different things that we have in place. We've got some ideas on how we can be fed up as well moving forward. So those are the three main focus areas that we have. But to answer your question, are we continuing? Absolutely. In fact, we're, we're working now. We just finished a, a contract today with, for some assistance on some of the areas that are the hardest hit. That was completed today. So we should have some contractors working to help clean up some of that stuff as well. So we'll just keep moving forward, and we'll keep battling until we win. That's, that's my goal, anyway.
I think you got a fourth piece. I think the communication part, which is always, is one of the things that I felt has been difficult to get across is, I think, I think citizens in Amarillo, they need to know exactly, really, really, truly what happened. And I know that comes out of Jordan's department, but.
There should be a press release going out right now.
Now, this is a huge deal, because this has been one of the number-one things that keeps coming up in every election cycle, is the trash problem in Amarillo. And for you guys to be stepping up and addressing it along with the community organizations, this is a, this is a major step forward in being, us being able to really have a big effect upon Amarillo, which is a beautiful place to live.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that.
And what can our, what can our citizens be doing to help as your crews are out there, you know, on a continual basis?
Putting it out front and calling us, that's the biggest thing, too. You know, just, we're going to try to educate people on that. There's some people that are doing that. They're putting it front, they become frustrated because we don't come get it. Call us, let us know that you have it there. Report, people, if you see someone that's illegal dumping somewhere, let us know. We have mechanisms in place that we can, we can go after them, and we want to do that. And we want it to stop. And, you know, I, I was having a phone conversation with somebody earlier in the week, last week, and, and I had to remind him that we're, the city is not the one that's putting these items out there. We're, we're on your team, too. We're, we're trying to help solve this problem, not, we're not trying to create it. So, and you have to, I have to remind myself of that and have to remind the citizens of that sometimes, too, that we're all on the same team. We're all trying to reach for the same goal. But, you know, again, it's difficult to make people do the right thing all the time, and that's, that's the biggest challenge of it.
Well, and I think it's important to give as frequently as possible, everyone, all of their options for what, what can you do with waste coming out of your house? So for our residents, and I'm talking about residential waste, if it is in the alley but not in a dumpster, that is illegal dumping. If you have something that will not fit in a dumpster, and then you can put it in on your front, right at the front curb, but call us first so that it doesn't sit there for a long time, because we have to know about it in order to get it. You, you can also, if you have brushy waste, you can take it to one of the brushy waste sites, or you can take it out to the landfill. A resident can go out to the landfill and take that brushy waste, or take that bulky waste straight out to the landfill. If you don't want to take it out to the landfill, call us, schedule a curbside pickup, put it on your front. So there are ways that we can take care of this without creating that really challenging problem that is the, the illegal dumping in the alleys. Donnie hit it on the head when he showed that great illustration of the, the claw trucks out there trying to, the boom trucks trying to pick up stuff in the alleys as compared to picking it up in, on the street. It is arguably 10 times faster to pick it up on the street than it is to pick up, pick it up in the alley. Less dangerous to the driver, less risky to our equipment, and faster for the resident. All of those are good things for, for all of us, whether you're a taxpayer, a resident, city employee, or, or, you know, for everyone.
And actually, you use less employees that way, too, right?
Absolutely.
You're much more efficient with the.
There's one employee in the front and, and three in the back on a, on a rear lurcher truck. And you can do it with a knuckle boom with one, but you better have a spotter. You know, you need to have at least two, so. And, and you, you nailed it. We have a, I'm glad I have an engineer on staff, because. on staff, because I call it Borgerr math whenever he starts trying to do his math for me. But we calculated that up, and Alan said, yeah, it's going to be eight to 10 times faster to do it on the street than it is. And we went out and observed, and you can go watch them. They come, pick it up, it's gone. You go in the alley, you've got a spot, you've got to get set, you've got to watch for everything. You can get killed in an alley pretty quick.
And it's not just a matter of space. You're in the alleys, there's gas meters all over the place, and they're not in a straight line.
Nope.
And those outriggers that have to be put out before you can start operating the boom, it's very easy to run those outriggers out right into a gas meter, right into a telephone pole, right, you can either damage the truck, or you can damage other infrastructure that's in place in the alley. And it could even be our meters and other things like that. So there's just so many more obstacles and barriers to quick cleanup in the alleys. So we want people to help us, and I think they want to help. I think our citizens want to help us. It's changing a lot of past education, because at one point, we were telling people, put it out in the alleys. So we've been very consistent for the last three or four years. You know, this is not where it needs to go. We understand that this is what we used to tell people, trying to, and we are slowly turning that giant supertanker to where people are doing a better job, or are putting it in the front, or taking it to the brushy waste, or taking it to the landfill themselves. All of those are great. We're not saying that's your only option. We're saying, we'll come pick it up for you on the front.
And we have another option, thanks to this council, and with the budget that was approved that's going to be coming soon, we're fixing to order our roll-offs, all 24 of those. So that'll be another program we'll put in place next year. Help for it.
Okay. Well, and one other thing is, we don't want to have an accident and damage a citizen's property, too, because that's the other thing when you're in that alley. It's a very tight, confined space. So...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions for Donnie?
One comment, just a comment, not a question. I appreciate your presentation. Bruce, I like the pictures. Pictures worth a thousand words. Starting today, I'm going to call you by a different name. Steven. Steven Spielberg.
[laughing]
For all these pictures.
I'm not sure how to take that, Howard, but thank you.
Thanks, Steven.
I'll take that as a compliment. Thank you all for your time. I'm really proud for what we've accomplished.
Thank you, Donnie. Really appreciate your work as well. Thank you so much. Okay, council, moving on to agenda item 1F, and that is discuss updates from council members serving on outside boards and commissions. And that would be, A, Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board. And we're probably kicking that to Dr. Eddie Sauer. Is that right? Councilmember Sauer?
So we met two weeks ago, and the main things that were basically discussed were, so part of the final approval kind of comes through for the Route 66 Water Tower emblem is kind of coming through the Arts and Beautification Board. And so there was a pretty big discussion on it, and, which is real interesting, and the font, and the color, and so that's still being discussed. The board, so one of the things that has occurred that we have found out that has been a bit difficult is getting the beautification project off the ground. And that's why I think it kind of dovetails into the fact that we do need what's happening with the master plan for parks, and, I mean, for arts and beautification. I think it'll be real important. And so part of the beautification funding that we had available, we made a donation to that, to putting the Route 66 on the water tower in San Jacinto. There was a donation made for $6,000 to part of that project. And I can't remember what is the number that we're trying to raise for that one?
Eighteen.
Eighteen thousand?
Yeah, eighteen thousand.
Yeah, eighteen thousand dollars is what it will cost to be able to put that emblem up there. So it's getting much, much more close. Other thing that we ended up talking about was, in the beautification project, was since we've had such a hard time getting that to occur, one of the things that happened out at the pool, the Thompson Park Pool, was the fact that there were two pieces of art that are going to be either been installed or being installed out there. And so in that, basically, we standardized the attachment of the art to the platforms out there. And so we began to discuss about the possibility of placing that in some of the regional or major parks out there, and what would that cost for us to be able to at least go ahead and get the platforms made, which would be a concrete pad with specific type attachments. And so for six parks, it's 14,000, about 14,300 for us to get that done. And so we're using part of that beautification, because now what will happen will be in those six particular parks, which is El Alamo, Bones Hooks, Rick Klein Trails, Memorial Park, Sam Houston Park, and John Stiff Park. Now then we'll have that ability for, now then we'll have two at the pool, and we'll have six others. And so it will give the opportunity for art to be moved around town, and for different installations of art to be able to occur all over town. So it's, that will be moving forward over the next couple of months, and give an opportunity for art to be further pursued in town. Also, consider the mural grant project for this coming up year, and the committee met and had cleaned up and reviewed. And so now then they've changed the way that the design is going to be, how the projects will be graded, and what will be done. And so the whole idea was, was to open it up for more creativity. There were a couple of projects that I would have loved to have seen happen on the mural project that they didn't follow underneath the creativity and the narrowness of it. So that's been changed. And so there would, there'll be more openness for that to be able to happen. We also, they've come up with a plaque for each one of the murals that will be, it won't be fixed to the building, it will be, what am I, the only word I can think of right now is glue. It'll be glued to the building. And it'll have a QR code, and that QR code, the intention is, is like in the master plan for parks and beautification, they talked about being able to catalog. And so the idea is going to be, with that QR code, it's going to then allow you to be able to find where other particular pieces of that mural project are at. And so it will open up the city for people to be able to go around if they want to do a mural crawl or whatever. So there's, those are the kind of things that kind of happened. And so it's still one of my favorite boards to be on. There's a lot of life and a lot of energy that comes from that board. And so that's what I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
I've got one for you, Dr. Sauer. So as far as beautification goes, do you guys look at anything for, like, the city transit bus stops, the rest areas, any kind of covered areas where we could dovetail those into our beautification projects?
Some of the things that we did talk about were, we've talked, we've discussed some of that, not so much as the coverings, but for how do you dress those up. There's even another project that's even been talked about in conjunction with talking to, not Atmos Energy, talking to XL about, you know, those big transformer boxes that are on the ground, can we put murals on those? Can we dress those up? So that's a great point, and that would be something that possibly could be considered. I don't know.
We have talked about allowing businesses to sponsor different bus stops and different shade structures and things like that, and putting artwork on those, and helping to defray the cost of those installations in the very first place. So we've looked at, not all of those efforts or initiatives or considerations have been done through the Beautification and Public Arts Committee, but we are looking at transit stops as a way to, one, provide an advantage to our community, but also as a canvas for art.
So would it be something that would qualify with public arts and beautification if we were trying to kill two birds with one stone and provide new benches, rest areas, along with some cover?
You mean through the money that we have allocated to?
Well, or for our future Public Arts and Beautification Plan, you know, as we're discussing, maybe allocating a 1% or something like that. Can we benefit our city transit that way?
It would depend on how that beautification 1% is written. In most of the places I've been where they had something like that, no, it wouldn't have fit, because it had to be dedicated art that didn't serve, that wasn't a building that I want to say is art, you know, because I can say there's a lot of buildings that are art. And a covering that has art on it, per the definitions of most cities, would not be considered art. So it really almost crosses the line between art and advertising. Using, putting art in a place where you could put advertising is not necessarily art per that definition. But we could always write it where it did. It really depends on what our community wants to do and how they want to fund arts in our community. This is a step, it's a big step, you know, to go into, you know, funding art through a compulsory contribution percentage of development costs, in this case, 1%. So however you get started on that is not a bad thing. So there's a lot of conversation to be had there. And I'm not saying there's one right way to do it. And I definitely don't want to say, hey, this city that's really into art, they did it this way, and we've got to do it that way. That's not what we're saying.
But I think there's also another part of that component that we've been dealing with also, is, I mean, there's all these little things that have come to a head that we're beginning to deal with over these past few years. And one of them has been transportation with all of the things that have occurred through transportation and redistricting, how the buses run, and how all of that. And I think we've discussed a little bit about those coverings based upon that. And some of that, we actually get some reimbursement, right, from federal dollars. And those are the kind of things that I'd also want to make for sure that we would take advantage of, because if it doesn't come out of, necessarily out of our pocket, but it's matching funds that's coming federally, then I think that would be something that we would really want to make for sure that that was a possibility also.
I think what you were getting to is, can a arts contribution funding go towards an art project that offsets an operational cost?
Yeah.
Or defrays an operational cost? Typically, no.
Looking for a way to marry function in art.
Yeah, I hear where you're coming from.
You know, so could we have some really good-looking rest areas that service our citizens at our bus stops, where we're lacking in that already, and we have this mechanism to pay for that?
I think when we get to the point where we're really lining out all the details on that, we'll present those options for you and let you guide us on how we write that up for y'all's consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Dr. Sauer, did you have anything else?
Did I miss anything? Okay.
Okay. So I just want to remind everybody that San Jacinto is going to have their arts project premiere this Thursday, which is September 30th, between 6:45 PM and 9:00 PM. And it's going to be at the Rockin' OT, which is 3100 West Sixth Street. So they're going to have their arts project premiere. So be sure and come out for that. All right. So we're moving on to agenda item 1G, which is discuss North Heights rezoning initiative for Phase Two. Mr. City Manager?
All right. We've got Emily Kohler here to present the item. And prior to handing it to Emily, this is an item that, it's just an update on the North Heights rezoning initiative, Phase Two. So it's not Phase One, which will be in front of council for second reading in October. This is the second phase, which is south of Amarillo Boulevard. It was in front of, well, I'm going to go ahead and hand it to Emily Kohler instead of stealing all your thunder, or any of your thunder. Emily, go ahead and take it away.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Yes, I will cover all those details. And good afternoon, council.
Welcome.
So, yeah, we're here today to give you a background on Part Two before consideration. So let me see here. Part Two is the southern part of the North Heights Plan area. It's entirely south of Amarillo Boulevard. So there aren't any properties along Amarillo Boulevard that are proposed to change. It's 168.88 acres. About half of the project area is proposed to be rezoned, so it's not a complete rezoning of all the land in this part of the plan area. And the districts that the area will be changing to, there are five of them, and I'll cover them in detail, but it's going to heavy commercial, light commercial, moderate density, general retail, and neighborhood services. And the area right now is almost entirely light industrial, with some heavy commercial and multiple-family ones. So on the map, everything that's purple is currently light industrial. And I think just right off the bat, I want to say that we recognize that the existing development patterns in this area make it more difficult even than Part One to achieve an ideal land use mix. But staff does feel that this proposal better aligns this part of the North Heights Plan area with the neighborhood unit concept, which is the guiding policy for all of the land use decisions that we do in Amarillo. So when you consider the entire proposal, Part One and Part Two, the northern part of the neighborhood was intended to be primarily single-family residential, and then the southern part of the plan area was intended to encourage a mix of apartments, duplexes, and triplexes. It's intended to have a general retail corridor on Hughes Street, and then also encourage new kind of neighborhood development around the St. Anthony's Hospital project. So the existing commercial industrial uses that are along the railroad tracks to the south and in the southeast portion of the plan area are mostly unaffected by the proposal. So the general perception, and I think this is really important, is that people think of this as a commercial and industrial area. But what we're working with is that currently the land uses are an almost equal percentage of residential. So the way the land is used now is almost equally residential as it is non-residential. So you can see the percentages there. 39% non-residential versus 37% residential, and another 24% is vacant. So as we've gone through this process, staff has, you know, worked really closely with the neighborhood on these recommendations. And it is our opinion that this particular part of the plan area is at a tipping point, which is going to determine how this part of Amarillo develops moving forward. So if this proposal is significantly altered, or deviated from, or not improved altogether, we think that there will be continued erosion of what was once a thriving business and community center for North Heights. And so our intent is not to downzone existing commercial properties, but to try to develop a more orderly land use pattern, so that the commercial uses can continue to operate without interfering with our efforts to revitalize the rest of the neighborhood. So now I mostly have pictures, I think, for you. So this is a map that we've been using with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this is the existing zoning. The purple is industrial, and then those purple pins are the resident, existing residential uses. So we have 129 residences. And one of the things that the Planning and Zoning Commission asked us is, do we have an idea of how many of those are occupied? And so we did do some research with our utility connections, and we have an estimate that about 74%, of those are currently occupied residences. So that's one of the biggest challenges in this area, is how do we blend very intensive industrial uses with existing residential uses. This map, we've been using at the workshops, and so this is a historic business map that were, these businesses were identified through a separate inventory with the neighborhood. But most of what is shown here, the little yellow squares, I know it's hard to see on the screen, but most of what is shown here is in the area that was the historic African-American business center in the flats. And as you probably know, this area is basically unrecognizable now. And businesses continued to move up along Hughes as the North Heights subdivision was developed. So again, we think that this rezoning proposal will reverse this trend of encroachment of these more intensive industrial uses, and allow the possibility of rebuilding the neighborhood with this type of development in the future. And so now I'll just go through some of the specific recommendations. So the first major change is heavy commercial. So there's 56.38 acres that are proposed to go mostly from light industrial, and this is in kind of the southeast corner. is in kind of the southeast corner of the project area, where a lot of the existing businesses are. And so the intent with heavy commercial is to accommodate those existing businesses and prevent the most intensive industrial uses in the future. And right now, we have eight residences that are non-conforming, and as a result of this change, those eight residences are continuing to be, will continue to be non-conforming. But I wanted to make sure that it's clear that there's no business that's currently operating in this area that would become a non-conforming use as, as a result of this Light commercial, there's a little bit of light commercial. This is mostly intended to be a buffer between that heavy commercial and those more intensive uses and the existing residential. We have currently, as far as non-conforming uses in this area, there are 14, again, houses, and those would continue to be non-conforming, but we're not, we wouldn't be affecting any of the existing commercial uses. General retail is proposed, this is along Hughes, so in its, Hughes right now is entirely heavy commercial, and so it's proposed to change to general retail. And the intent behind this is to transition it back to more of a, a small business corridor. Currently, we have 25 non-conforming uses in this corridor, and 23 of those are residential. And so the non-conforming, we would be creating a couple. Most of those residences are going to stay as our non-conforming uses, but there are two auto-related ones that would become non-conforming. And we do have a solution for any businesses that are impacted through this process, that we could possibly waive those fees for the specific use permit through the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone Ordinance, which is another initiative that the Planning Department has been working on. Moderate density, this is on kind of the western side of the neighborhood, where those existing residences are. So what, it's primarily light industrial right now, and would change to moderate density to match the existing residential character. And so right now, in, in that area, we've got 43 non-conforming uses. Those are all residences. And so by doing this, we, we make a lot of those conforming. And there are a sort of a mix of, like, utility shops and private storage in here, and those would become non-conforming in moderate density. And then the last one is neighborhood services. And this is proposed around the St. Anthony's Hospital project. And the intent here is to allow both residential-type uses, as well as a, a mix of other kind of low-impact commercial uses, to create more of a neighborhood feel around what is proposed to be about a $30 million senior housing investment. So we're hoping that that's going to be a catalyst for this neighborhood, and we want to make sure that those adjacent uses complement that and continue to encourage investment in that area. But this is one of the most difficult parts of the project area. You can see the number of existing non-conforming uses, and proposed non-conforming after that continues to be sort of a mix of both commercial and residential. So staff found that this proposal to be consistent with all of our kind of guiding policies, the North Heights Neighborhood Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, is consistent with future land use maps for the area. And so it was recommended for approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And a motion to approve the recommendation as presented was denied with a vote of three to four. And so there was no other motion that was made. And because of the way our, our code is written, if P&amp;Z recommends that a change should not be made, then at that point, the applicant has to appeal. And so since this is a comprehensive rezoning and city-initiated, then the city appealed that, that decision, so it could be then considered by City Council. So just to wrap it up, Part 2 then is scheduled for your consideration, first reading and public hearing at the next council meeting, so October 12th. We also have Part 1, second reading, that's also scheduled for that same meeting. So that concludes my slides. I think I'll pause here and see if Chris is here, Andrew, and if there's anything that you'd like to add also.
Okay. Thank you, Emily. Appreciate that. So council, at this particular time, I would like for us to have a dialogue with the City Manager as to what resources and information you need going forward for Phase 2 of, of the process, and what you need from staff in order to better understand the rezoning initiative for the North Heights Advisory Association. And so Emily, I'll just start off. I do have a question in regards to planning and zoning. Why, was there a reason as to why the, the motion was denied? I mean, did they give a reason as to, you know, why they said no? I mean, what were their concerns?
Yes. So actually, there was very little discussion, the, the meeting where action was taken, but we did put it on the next agenda as a discussion item, so we did get some feedback. And I think the, the primary concern from those that voted against it was that they felt that, that this did impact the, the uses available to property owners. They felt it does affect the value of those property owners, the value of those properties, and that it should be the property owner's decision whether it's rezoned or not. They felt like because there isn't consensus on that, on behalf of those property owners, that they should be able to make that decision. And I think that, that there were some other concerns expressed about nothing changed throughout the process, that this was the, the same, same proposal that, you know, we'd been presenting since the beginning, and they felt like there should have been more consideration to some of the feedback earlier in the process. I'd say those are the two main items.
Okay.
Okay, so I've got one que, I've got one question. So it seems to me that if we don't do anything, and the zoning stays the same, you've got all of these non-conforming properties in there, so now then that they've all of a sudden been risen to the top of the, of the heap, now then you've got all these non-conforming properties in this light industrial, what happens going forward? Let's say we don't do anything, and you've got all these non-conforming properties, do they have to conform to light industrial?
Well, I think that those residences can continue to exist there as long as they're residences, they're considered probably illegal, non-conforming use. But over time, as the area develops, then yes, they would be expected to comply with the industrial zoning. It's just those residents have been there for a long time, but yeah, as they're torn down or people come in. So the, the residential use, that single family, isn't allowed in industrial zoning, right? So we, and we do have active developers working in that area. We've had people come and speak at, at public meetings about that they're, you know, they've been building houses in that area, they're working, they're actively working in that area. So there is interest for this type of redevelopment already. There's evidence of that already.
So how is that addressed in the new plan?
So most of the residential, the existing residential uses are protected in that moderate density area. So that the, the sort of western side of the project area is mostly residential, and then general retail is proposed, that's a, you know, less intensive commercial uses adjacent to that. And then there is a buffer, like, we're trying to step down between the most intensive commercial uses to those residents. So that's the whole goal of what we're trying to do here, is just sort of protect the existing residential, allow those businesses to continue to operate, and encourage a better, a better and more compatible transition between them. And if, if we don't do anything, I think, I think I hopefully answered your question, but if we don't do anything, like, we expect to see, like, that slide with the flats, that continued sort of encroachment of those intensive industrial uses in this area. And I think that's, I mean, I think that's the question. It's like, the neighborhood is saying they want to see this redevelop as a neighborhood, and without action, I think we would just slowly see those utility shops, storage warehouses, contractor trade, not, I mean, not that there's anything wrong with that, it's just like, it's the decision about the character of this area. And this is the best proposal to, to sort of protect existing business interests and encourage more neighborhood-style redevelopment.
So when you've talked to the people that are against this portion of the, of the plan, have they given you any alternative information? Or have they just said, no, we don't want this?
Has anybody spoken against this portion of the plan, Phase 2?
So we have heard from primarily property owners that have tenants in this area that are concerned about the ability to continue to fill those properties if they have fewer uses available to them. The North Heights Advisory Association did a lot of kind of on-the-ground work, where they went and talked to a lot of the businesses in what's proposed to be the heavy commercial and neighborhood services area, and found very little resistance. We've met with some of the large property owners, like Plains Dairy, there's no resistance there. It's mostly those that own a property that's leased to another tenant that has expressed concern.
On the P&amp;Z process, so you're appealing the, the vote against. Do you have any other alternatives at this point? Do you feel like you, you could produce an alternative plan, take it back to P&amp;Z? Or is there a solution there that they would accept and recommend? Or are you taking the stance that this is the best you have, and we're going to move forward with it to the council as the appeal?
Well, I think we asked P&amp;Z, what would you change to have Phase 2 be approved? And I don't know that we got any, did we get any changes requested?
We made a few changes earlier in the process, like, there's some neighborhood services that accommodate some of the existing businesses out there. A few changes around St. Anthony's, but as far as the, like, where there's light commercial and heavy commercial, we haven't heard any other alternative. I think industrial zoning allows, you know, the widest range of uses, and I think that that's what they've expressed that they want, is the, like, heavy commercial is only one step down from that. So, yeah, we haven't really heard another alternative.
To, to clarify a little bit, and I'm not saying I understand the process, this is the way I, I feel about it, so tell me if I'm wrong. If you move forward with this and the rezoning takes place, nothing really happens. If you don't move forward with this and no rezoning takes place, nothing really happens. So we're saying that if you're non-conforming and we rezone you, we'll still allow you to be non-conforming until that property sells, correct?
Correct.
And we're also saying if we don't-
Well, wait.
Well, until the use changes or the property sells.
Yeah. Well, and it's not even the sale, it's the change of use, so that, that property could change ownership, and that same use can continue.
So flip it around, if you, if you didn't rezone anything and property went for sale, would you then be non-conforming and not allow that at the sale of the property, or would it only be upon usage in either situation?
Change of use.
Change of use, that we would, that we would ever approach it from the city.
Restate that one more time, so I make sure I'm telling you answer, a correct answer.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm curious, does, is anything different? Are we really, are we really growing something here that will help us develop and, and improve that neighborhood? Or are we looking into the same situation, whether we have non-conforming residential that we're going to allow to be non-conforming residential even when it sells?
Absolutely, we're making a difference. The, this is, this is not a difference for tomorrow. This is a benefit that the neighborhood will begin to realize immediately, but will fully realize, I mean, how long down the, Emily, I mean-
We talk about these plans being 20-year, neighborhood plans being 20-year plans.
Mm-hmm. So to create the, the, the foundation for additional investment, additional residential investment, additional neighborhood-associated investment, like the general retails on the fringes of the residential, it will create the stepped intensities that will be essential for healthy growth. When people say, why can't this part of town be like, and I know the, the classic example is, why can't it be like southwest Amarillo? Well, and, and I'm not saying that's the way every part of town needs to be, but when someone says that, well, there's a few fundamental planning barriers to, especially these neighborhood planning areas, developing like that, because they haven't had a very planned approach since their start, like these newer parts of town. And I say newer parts of town, southwest Amarillo is by any definition, the very southwest edges of Amarillo are very new, and only came about in a very high intensity, or a very professional planning environment. Whereas you look at our oldest parts of town, they just kind of evolved, and they have incompatible uses next to each other, they have non-conforming uses very frequently. And that's both due to just the way things happened, and also due to lack of attention on the city's part, in some cases, and just lack of attention to code and zone on possibly property owner's part. Doesn't mean any of those are bad, or that where they were done because of nefarious intent, but the result is an area that is not positioned to reinvigorate itself. So the whole purpose of this is a function of the neighborhood plans. Neighborhood plans, whether it's North Heights, Barrio, San Jacinto, East Ridge, East Ridge not finished, but we have recommendations from the neighborhood plan out of the North Heights, from the neighborhood plan in the Barrio, and from the neighborhood plan with San Jacinto, all recommending and requesting rezoning of their areas to be able to facilitate, I'm at a loss for the word, a, a better way to go going forward, so that they can have a healthy neighborhood at some point in the future, or a more robust neighborhood at some point in the future. These plans were presented to P&amp;Z, all of them were recommended for approval to City Council, and they all included a plan to rezone. And then, once approved by City Council, were incorporated into our Comprehensive Plan. So we have our neighborhood plans and our Comprehensive Plan that call for rezonings, that were recommended for approval by our P&amp;Z and approved by the City Council. And, and at this point now, where it comes sausage-baking time, and nobody ever approves, or nobody ever is unanimous on, you know, you never have unanimous support for any rezoning, any comprehensive rezoning in any city. And I've done it in, in at least one other city, and with, with Emily's assistance on that one, for part of the, part of the project. So we, really at this point, we just need some guidance from, from council. You know, how do y'all want to move forward? And, you know, we'll, we'll go that way, do whatever you want us to do.
I would like to ask a question of, of, you know, last time this, this came up, my, my question was why? You know, why do this? I think my question today is more like, why not? In the way of, we're assuming that in order to revitalize an older neighborhood, a 100-year-old neighborhood that's not ever going to look like every other part of town, and that we don't want that. You know, we want Amarillo to have its own feel. We want downtown to feel different, you know? Culture is in that 100 years. So like, I think our assumption is, is that you have to, in order to revitalize an older neighborhood, you have to rezone it. I think my question to that is, is that a good premise to move forward? Do we have to do that in order to revitalize that neighborhood? Or can we still do empowerment zones? Can we still create a- Can we still create a tiers? Can we still incentivize and, and clean up and beautify these neighborhoods and still protect the, the residences? And so, why not, you know, put all of these other things in place first? Or why not go to the actual applicants? The comprehensive rezoning, I think, is where I, I get stuck. Comprehensive rezoning works different than any other rezoning I'm, I'm familiar with. The applicant is normally the property owner who's making application to be rezoned. In this case, it's the city making application, not the property owner. So why not attempt what we're trying to, which is with good effort, you know, and a lot of hard work for a good outcome, looking out for your citizens, but why not go a different direction first? Why, why go here first?
Well, I would say that if we're going to see real change in these neighborhoods, we have to be able to encourage reinvestment, like substantial reinvestment. And I, I think that, and we all feel the same way, that the only way you're going to get any confidence from the private sector investing in an area is that there's an orderly land use pattern that will protect that investment over time. And so if, I, I do think if there's, if there's no action, that we don't create that in the North Heights Plan area, and there isn't going to be any predictability, and so I think that's the biggest risk.
And I think, just to add to that, it goes to the level of project that we're talking about. I described zoning as a foundational component of redevelopment, because it is, it is the foundation on which everything is built. It builds the confidence. There are other things like the tiers and the, and the reinvestment zones and things that you can do. Those are things you layer on top of the foundational elements, but this is one of the most basic foundational elements that we have to address, otherwise we can't build on it, it's an unstable foundation.
I hear what you're saying. I, I don't see the benefit in any kind of practical way, because you don't really change any confidence, because you don't change any usages, you grandfather those in. And so we really don't change anything, but we are, I guess, at the, at the utmost, we're changing expectations that we should now see developers that want to get involved and make these large investments. And, and how can they when it's going to be property by property over 20, 30-year outlook to lay this foundation? And ultimately, we're trying to change an old neighborhood into look like something that it's not, it's just not. And so, outside of the personal property rights and everything else, I'm just looking practically. You know, how much more would we get out of our time and energy over the next 20 years if we looked at other alternatives and we weren't pushing for rezoning first, as a consideration?
Well, I, to answer the question, what do we get 20 years from now? If we don't do anything, we get the same thing. And I don't mean that, I really don't mean that to be a, a glib answer. We do know that when we do large-scale rezonings, it creates the environment for consistent land use and for investment. It does happen over time. It's just like saying, changing sign standards. For a long time, you have, when you go from pole signs to monument signs or something like that, for a long time, you still have those nonconforming, pre-existing pole signs, and eventually, that business will change, that use will change, and that sign will change. And then eventually, your city, from a sign standpoint, looks the way you intended it to look, or where you, you aspired for it to look. It's the same with, with zoning. Eventually, you will have that reinvestment in those residential areas, you will have that reinvestment in the general retail areas and in the office areas, that facilitates the type of development that the community was looking for when they chose and recommended the, the zoning plan that, that was adopted. But it only happens if you set the foundational, if you set the groundwork and then work on it over time. It doesn't, it will never happen immediately.
I just want to, I just want to state one assumption. Just because I didn't want to rezone, or, or we don't move forward with rezoning, doesn't mean that the, we're in favor of doing nothing. So good leadership here would say, "Just because it's not this way, it doesn't mean it can't be that." And so, I'm not advocating for doing nothing. I'm advocating for doing what's best for that neighborhood. I just question, is this Step One, the best Step One you can take?
Councilmember Smith?
As I said when we talked about Part One, which isn't on the agenda, Part Two is, but I had a problem with the city changing the zoning. Has, has any effort, I'm not aware of any effort being made to ask owners to apply to change the zoning. If, I don't know why the Neighborhood Association or the city could approach every owner going right down the block, say, "We recommend you change zoning to this", and get them to apply to change it, instead of the government changing it. That's where I have a problem.
Well, there has been property owner outreach, there haven't been, you know, there haven't been questions about asking them, but they're, I mean, they've, they've been asked whether they're neutral in support or opposed, and the vast majority of the ones that the Neighborhood Association talked with were either supportive or neutral. So, you know, if we were to go back with something like that, I, I'm not sure we would find a lot of opposition. I think it's, it's just the comprehensive nature, like, these zoning cases are intended to be examined, you know, as a whole, and so we can look at, you know, how one district transitions to the next, and, and I think that's why it comes as a full proposal like this versus every property owner saying, "I, you know, I want this one versus that one." I think that's why these processes are designed like that, is because they, they have to be studied and recommended in a more comprehensive manner, just to ensure we end up with the, with the right result.
And if you have areas with incompatible uses inside residential areas or, or something else, that choose through the process, or inquired about to not rezone, then you have a, a result that is not that much different than what we currently have, which is incompatible uses next to each other. Taking input throughout the process from every single property owner is appropriate, but at some point, the staff working with the neighborhood, working through P&amp;Z, and finally through council, has to make decisions, which is what we've kind of, the saucers we've kind of made, and how we've ended up where we are, going through that process. And at some point, either you, you do it or choose not to do it, and I'm not saying one of those is wrong or right, and, and it could be that this is not something that, that's chosen to be done right now. But if you end up with something that is, that, that has incompatible uses surrounded by, you know, like, industrial surrounded by residential, or high-intensity uses next to low-intensity uses, you really have defeated the purpose of the process, and you haven't accomplished the goal of the project. And, and maybe it's that, now that we're here at this point, we realize that decisions made previously, when they were conceptual, are not desirable once it's rubber meets the road.
Okay, council, any other comments or concerns for Emily?
Yeah, maybe I've got a couple of questions. So, I, I guess, the ones that I, I would be more concerned about might be those that are in residences that have been in there for, you know, a number, a long time, we'll just say a long time. And, and my big thing is, is, is I, I do not like seeing light industrial next to residences. I have a big problem with that part of it. But I, I guess, so I'm looking at some of this other stuff that you, that you guys have, have made a proposal. So you've got these nonconforming, you've changed, you've, you all have made a proposal for moderate density, but there's still a lot of multifamily I dwellings there. So is there a reason why you didn't go ahead and carve that out and leave that, go ahead and leave that multifamily I? Why move it to multi, to, to moderate density? And then, actually, the part that's around St. Anthony's and Faith City Mission, where there's the, a, a number of residences there also. Why didn't we make a concession? Because you could have still put neighborhood services around them. Why didn't we make them moderate MF I's also, which basically leaves the residences alone and do the rest of it neighborhood services around that? So I'm just, so I'm just kind of thinking through, I, I don't want to throw something and just say, "No, I don't like what you're doing." I, I think there ought to be some thought given to, okay, so what would you do in place of that? And so, that would be, I, I guess, part of my consideration. I, I will tell you right now, I don't like leaving something light industrial. If you're going to, if we're going to offer rehabilitation for a neighborhood, you darn sure don't want to leave it in light industrial, and I would have a problem with that. But I just kind of wonder, so like, on the moderate density, they were from primarily multifamily I, why not leave them multifamily I?
Well, and I think I can address that. So, that probably on the slide should have been presented as primarily light industrial. There's just a tiny bit of MF I in that moderate, existing MF I in that moderate density. So when you look at the line of, on the existing zoning map, where industrial transitions to MF I, the MF I all stays, and so everything that's light industrial around there, for the most part, changes to moderate density. So we do leave that MF I in existing, and there's just a, a very small bit of it that's kind of wrapped in the industrial area, excuse me.
Yeah, because when I look at this one right here, it looks like you've got a whole lot of houses sitting in, in light industrial.
Yeah, so like, that line where the brown starts-
Yes.
-up to that line, all changes to moderate density, and then the brown is multifamily, and it stays in the proposal. And so we do accomplish that, removing the existing residences from industrial and not touching what is already zoned multifamily.
What about this over here, that you've got a lot of residences, it appears, but I know that from looking here, you've got it neighborhood services, which now makes these residences nonconforming, so-
Actually, so that's one of the important changes in the zoning code revision, like, the, the big zoning code revision, is that neighborhood services will allow residential uses. And so that's, that's why it's proposed there, is because it's, it's actually kind of designed for that, to allow a mix of apartments, single-family duplexes, along with like dentist's office and pet groomers and things like that.
Okay, so those houses would not be nonconforming, those residences, and they could stay that way, even if they were rental properties or whatever? So I guess my first question is, is that correct? All of this is light industrial?
Yes, everything that's purple is light industrial.
And I will say, I do have a problem with that. Especially if we want to give the opportunity for the community to grow, I have a problem So I do think we need to do something. I don't know what that something is, but I think we do need to do something.
Here's, here's something, you may not agree with it, but I'd like to see us, either Neighborhood Association, or city staff, give guidance to them, go to every property and say, "We would like to have such and such a zoning, just like you're proposing." And, and I know there's a fee to apply to change the zoning, and some money be raised. If, if they can't pay it, then offer to help them get it paid. And you might, if you went through that, it couldn't be done in a week, it couldn't be done in a month, it'd take a while, but if you got, you might get 10% of what you want, you might get 90%, you might get 50%, I don't know, until that effort is done. But at least the owners would be deciding what zoning they apply for. So, if somebody's asking for something, that's, that's what I'd propose. I, I don't necessarily disagree with the zoning, you want to change it to, I disagree with the method of changing it.
Well, I guess, we would wait for some direction on whether we needed to pursue something like that.
Yeah, I would need council guidance, that is a departure from what we've been doing, so we'll absolutely do what council wants us to do, and, you know, as we go, that, that would be a, you know, a departure from the plans that we have in place right now, and we can absolutely do that, you know, if council, that's the way council wants to go on it. It is different from what, what we're currently directed to do.
So what I would like right now, Mr. City Manager, is for council to get with you and staff with their concerns, additional information that they need before the October 12 meeting, because this will be back on the agenda again, at least somewhere around there.
Yes, ma'am.
But for them to work with you and work with the staff on, on what, what information do they need in order for us to move this project forward?
Okay.
So, so that at least we can all be on the same page and working towards the same goal. Fair enough?
Yes, ma'am. Well, do it.
Thank you. Are there any other additional questions for Emily? No? Okay, Emily, thank you so much, appreciate the presentation.
You're welcome, thank you.
To you and Chris, thank you. Okay, so council, right now, what I would like to suggest before we, let's, let's take care of this last item on, it's 1H, so are there any requests for future agenda items and reports from the city manager?
So I would like to request an item for discussion, city transit bus stop benches and coverings.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other items, council? No? Okay. Mr. City-
Any, any objection to putting that on there?
So, council, at this particular time, I would like for us to take a four-minute break before we move into the consent items.
Four minutes?
Yes, four minutes. You can use that four minutes anywhere you want to. Okay, we're ready to resume our meeting here. Moving on to agenda item two, which is the consent items. Council, is there anything on the consent agenda that you have a question, concern, or you would like for it to be pulled off of the agenda for further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Protem, I'd like item P taken off and considered individually, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other items for consideration? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item P.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of, what item was that? One, B?
P.
P.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Sauer and a second by Councilmember Smith. All those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, that item passes with a 4-0 vote. Mr. City Manager, item P, give me just a moment here. Let me get to... Item P on the consent agenda is consider approval for COVID vaccine round four grant funding. Mr. City Manager?
This is additional funding. I didn't have anybody to tell me to turn on my mic. This is a, a revision to an existing grant that we receive annually, to do immunization vaccinations citywide. In the light of COVID, this grant has been bolstered a number of times previously through amendments. It was most recently, we had, I want to say a little over $4 million added in May of this year, and this is an additional eight and a half million. We've got Casey Stotin, Director of Public Health, here to just give us the highlights, talk about what it can be used for, what it can't be used for, the history of the grant, and, and how we came to have access to this money. This is not actually a, a grant of money, though. It's an authorization for reimbursement up to an additional eight and a half million dollars on, on top of everything that we've- on, on top of everything that we've already been granted through this grant, or awarded through this grant. So we do have to show expenditure, whether it's in staffing, marketing, whatever it is that we'll be doing through this grant, or whatever allowable activities we do through this grant. We do have to demonstrate that we spent it, then we get reimbursed through this grant, up to an additional eight and a half million dollars. Casey?
Thank you, sir. So as Jared said, we have received the initial award for this particular grant back in May. And then this is an amendment to that grant, adding an additional eight and a half million dollars for COVID vaccine funding. The initial award was around $4 million, four and a half million. So the, on the state side, they use the nomenclature, nomenclature for COVID round four. But that is, that's the state's name for that grant. We haven't received like round one, two, three. We have, so this will be, this is what they named the grant. I'm not sure why, but that's just the name of it. So it is an amendment to the local health entity COVID vaccine grant. And as Jared said, we have, there are very specific deliverables that are set in place by the grant. This, this contract was amended, and so it amended and it added a set of deliverables for the grant that adds mobile clinics, targeting certain populations, and providing education. So that's really kind of the crux of that grant. Temporary staffing is really kind of the bulk of it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stanley, any other additional questions or information that you need?
Yeah, if you, if you would be patient with me. So I got this information today. And so I have several questions. And, and Casey, as many as you can answer, or city manager, or maybe even Laura? Because it goes back and forth, I'm sure, to different topics. So 4.5 million on the original grant, and the city applied for that. And that 4.5 million came from our request. So we have a breakdown in this original document here.
Well, the four and a half was the most, the most recent amendment.
4.1, I'm sorry.
That was the most recent amendment prior to this one, right?
It was the initial contract. So we have, there's several immunization grants. We have our yearly immunization grant. And then that contract was amended. And then we also have this contract.
So this is separate from that annual grant?
This is separate from that, yes, sir.
And I apologize, I misspoke earlier.
Can we go back to, if y'all could help me with the dates? I don't know if it was two weeks, four weeks ago. We had a grant that was 1 point something million that was for city health department, correct? And it was specifically for vaccines?
So that was a different...
That's a different grant.
We have about 15 different grants.
Yeah, and so I, I don't want to speak or assume something that's not true. So COVID vaccine funding, just as a whole, were we given any grants on that so far this year besides the 4.1 that you've given me here?
So we have one additional that was an amendment to our yearly vaccination grant. And that was about $99,000. And that has, I'd have to find Laura, but I think that money has all been expended. Or it will be at the end of this fiscal year.
Is it fair to start with this 4.1 million in attachment B?
So, yes, because this is all one contract.
Okay. So I'm trying to, to just get a, some footing here. I see personnel, I see some fringe cost, I see equipment, supplies. Am I correct in assuming that the, the vaccines, as far as the syringes and the actual medicine, is included in these amounts?
So the, the syringes were purchased on a contract last year, last fiscal year. And we do not have to purchase the actual vaccine.
So the, the actual vaccine itself is not included in this? The syringes is not included in this?
Correct.
So these are additional medical supplies?
Right.
Alcohol swabs, whatever?
Sharp containers, yeah.
Okay. And then the labor to administer this personnel? And that would include overhead costs as well?
Right, so it's both in temporary staffing and in full-time staffing.
Okay. So our contractual costs, like in this one, it's 4.186 million. Contracts are 3.265. Who are these contractors? And do you have a breakdown of them? Or what does contractual mean?
So contractual would be that line item specifically for any contracts or contractors that we might have. So typically, we would use either Angel Staffing for our professional staff or Express Staffing, which is the city's contracted provider for temporary staffing.
Anything we contract for, for any service through the grant, would have to go through this process. Casey's talking about personnel and staffing, but that would apply for any service we contracted through it. And it would have to comply with both state and city purchasing guidelines, bidding guidelines, things like that.
I'm curious, though, on contractual. We have personnel at 528,000. And this is a, this is a four-year grant, three, three years left on it, right?
Right.
So we've been tracking the amount of, the amount of monies we've expensed on this. You have to submit a report.
Right.
How much does it cost to, to run our vaccination clinic?
So on that, and that particular grant, so that, that first set of funding was, it required us to, and we hired a program manager, a registered nurse, and two DIS. So that is in the personnel, on the personnel side, we have four full-time staff members. On the contractual side, we have a set of, we have a team of, of nurses who, and temporary staff who make up that contractual side.
So I would be correct in assuming that it costs $528,000 for four years' worth of personnel?
Correct.
Being the four individuals that you're speaking of? And 3.2 million for the nurses that are administering these, these vaccines?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have a count of how many people that is?
Yes, that is 10 full-time nurses, six days a week for 18 months.
Okay. And they, and we've been open and they've been, we've needed 10 full-time the entire time, right?
Yes, sir.
And you project that for the next two and a half, three years, you're going to need the same?
Yes, sir.
And so does that add up in the 3.2 million? 10 at six days a week at $50 an hour?
Well, it's 2.6. And then we also have the Express Staffing, which is 10 support staff, six days a week, 18, for 18 months. So it's, we have both, both contracts are in that contractual line item. So Angel Staffing and Express are both in that line item.
So you're, the, the addendum, I guess we'll call it, right? Has the other breakdown, is the...
No, it's in that one, so the, the page that you're looking at right now, in that contractual line item, the 3.2
Six.
is made up of two contracts, Angel Staffing and Express.
So on attachment B1, which is the supplemental budget, we have 8.366 million dollars for the same contracts.
Right, so that's, that's Angel Staffing, Express. And then we have, we'll be also hiring a, either a consultant or a marketing firm to do the activities in the other piece of, in the other deliverables.
So am I correct that the 3.2 million is included in this 8.3?
No, it's additional.
So we need to add those together?
Yeah, yes, sir.
So we're planning on spending roughly $11.5 million in these three contracts to administer the vaccines with nurses that are hired?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and we wouldn't ever want to just hire our own nurses and through the health clinic? Like add a few more positions?
We're really struggling to hire nurses. I've had several positions open. It is impossible to hire nurses right now.
But we could, if we could get them, we could fund them through this, this grant just as easily as using the contract.
I can't, I can't hire nurses right now. Our, like, our salary is, is pretty, is, is low. I mean, nurses are being hired at, at an incredible salary, so.
Our salary used to be
It used to be quite competitive.
A competitive salary. And in this climate and, and in this, after this sustained period of time, the market has changed on nursing. And it is more cost-effective and more realistic for us to be able to get people to staff the vaccination centers
It is.
or the vaccination function through contract staffing rather than hiring people, just because of the, the challenges of changing the, the entire city pay scale to be able to get them on board.
And as a result of the RAC nurses, isn't your pay scale like 3X?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, like it's...
3X, normal.
It is a real challenge.
They're paying three times, so like a typical nursing salary, you know, you'd have roughly $1.8 million a year going out with the six days a week, 10 employees full-time. So if you ran that forward three years, I mean, you're $5 million and we're 11.5. So, so somewhere in there, we're, you know, three times the cost to, to have these nurses. And we're projecting, right? So tell me, what happens if you don't spend all the money?
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't seek reimbursement for it.
Oh, okay.
So we don't, the, the money isn't ours, it's all reimbursement.
It doesn't get put in an account. All we have is a, what we get is a, basically a bank draft. That says, if you give us receipts for this, for up to eight and a half million, you can get eight and a half million. But we're just going to give them an accounting for actually what we spend. And we're only going to spend what we need.
Right.
And the money has been allocated to Texas. And so I felt like it was really important to our community to have that money earmarked for Amarillo.
Okay.
And so, because it's, it's, it's important for our community, it's important for our economy, it's important for our people, like it's, you know, to have this money earmarked, because the money is out there. So it's important for us to have the money earmarked for our community.
I, I'm curious, like, the, the total requirements. I don't get a lot of education here on this breakdown. So like, are, are, is this a long list of requirements? When you receive this money and, and what you're required to do in order to, to, you know, qualify for reimbursement?
Right, and, you know, whenever it says, like, I mean, this is kind of a succinct way to write many of these things, but they're quite robust activities. You know, if I say, build a house, like it's, that's a, you know, a very short sentence, but there's a lot in it.
Right.
There's a lot to that, but it's one sentence. And so like, some of these things are quite, you know, quite robust, even though they're...
Okay. So to not get into how hard it is to build a house and how we couldn't explain that to me in five minutes, let's just ask some, some critical guidelines. Advertising and promotion, do you have a percentage of this money that goes to that?
Right, so on, and that is only in the second contract, in that round four contract?
Yes, ma'am.
And so that is about, and I do nurse math, so, you know, all the P, all the folks in the room, but that's, it's right around, it's about 2.4 million. So out of, out of the 12, that's what, a sixth?
Yeah, six, seven.
So roughly two and a half million dollars will go to advertising and promoting this, right?
And that is, that, that checks off several of the objectives. So it's not necessarily just for advertising, but it provides the, like, the education, the kind of bringing together of groups and... Yes, it's, it's, it's more than that, but that's...
Okay.
And that's like 20% of the total?
And just to clarify, I know you put it in the, in the, the note here. None of this money goes for monoclonal antibodies, any kind of other pre-treatment, early treatment. This is strictly vaccine. All of those other infusion center is all being paid through, was that DSHS that's, that's paying directly for that now?
Right, so that's T-DIM and the state. And the, the monoclonals are coming from the state.
Okay. So I was reading through here, and it does say, you know, some of the advertising that will be done, you know, is based on, like, the VAERS report. And so I'm curious why we have the VAERS report, you know, identified in here as one of our requirements. But then we're not necessarily utilizing that tool to educate on some of our adverse reactions that we've seen.
So are you looking at B, like, number, letter B, number five?
I'll find it here. It gave you a good list of, of maybe, as a community, what we can do to educate.
Was it a, you can use these things, or you shall use these things? Or was it, these are the examples of things that you could do, or?
Because many of those sections talk about...
It's actually on, this is, is this B2? So it's on page six of nine on the original contract.
Uh huh.
Number five, yeah, you're in B5. Support provider training and reporting of vaccine adverse events to VAERS. So we want to make sure that we are reporting these adverse events to VAERS
Right.
with this money, correct?
Right, so that is us, and, and training other providers on, on their reporting to VAERS, but not necessarily marketing.
Yeah, we're, we're training people. We're, we're making sure that VAERS is being reported accurately. We're not marketing VAERS.
No, and, and I'm not saying to market VAERS. What I'm saying is, is we have a large sum of money here that we're going to utilize in a biased way to promote a vaccine and try to encourage the public to come and get it. I'm curious as to how much control we have as a city council or as a community in getting the message out of, if you would like to be vaccinated, we want you to get it. And we especially want you to be informed. We want you to know all the risks, we want you to know all the rewards, and everything that you're doing as an individual to take this risk upon yourself to be vaccinated. So it's just unique to me that we don't utilize the VAERS system when it's in the, the protocol that's given. Because the last time we had talked about VAERS, we were saying it was unsubstantiated.
Well, we, we absolutely use VAERS, and it's a very important system, but it's important to use it as it's intended. And so we, we will certainly, you know, provide that training and education to providers on their role and their responsibility in reporting to VAERS.
As far as VAERS goes, for us, and the reason why VAERS is part of this grant is to make sure that both we and our providers in the area are reporting accurately to VAERS. None of this is designed to provide us the capability or to direct us to analyze anything that comes out of VAERS or that goes into VAERS. We just want to make sure that our providers are accurately reporting to VAERS. That's what this is talking about. So we 100% support VAERS, reporting to VAERS and all of that.
So my, my question is more personal in the way of, you know, attempting to be a good leader and, and to support something, I'd want to support it wholeheartedly. And in the way of looking, attachment A1, you know, once identified, grantee will perform targeted educational and outreach regarding COVID-19, vaccination of these communities. Methods of education and outreach can include, you know, but not limited to, door-to-door educational pamphlets, you know, town hall meetings, neighborhood associations, festival fair. We do none of these, correct?
Well, we've done some town hall meetings, we've done some neighborhood association meetings. We met with the Barrio Association, we've met with the NAACP.
Was that a while back, or?
The town hall was pretty recently, it was a conversation, I mean, as a, what would you call it?
We've met with them a couple of times, I think.
Many solutions, that's what we called it.
That would be highly effective in reaching our community and understanding, you know, the, the resistance that we're, we're encountering and just the questions, and then the dialogue that's not being given. Even to the point where, like, right now, we really don't even have a, you know, an agenda item where we can hear from our community. And so I'm only, I'm only hearing from those that are reaching out to me directly. And I'd love to hear from the, the community as a whole. So like, in the way of going door-to-door, if I were to take a pamphlet to somebody's door and say, hey, I want to make sure you know, we've got you a vaccine clinic down the street. Here's everything it'll do, and here's what it doesn't do. Am I being educated with VAERS and with, you know, the statements from the manufacturer and everything that goes on to be able to answer those questions as I knock on that door?
I would say, no, you're not being educated with VAERS. You wouldn't be. You would be educated as far as, here's where you can get a vaccination, here's why you need to get a vaccination, you know, things like that. The purpose of the DSHS grant and the governor telling them to do it for us is to increase the number of people in the state that have been vaccinated. And that's, I mean, the state, I don't know, I think, I think we're 50 or 60, something like that. But we're definitely, I think, one of the lowest vaccination areas of the state. So that's why we're getting such a, a good portion of money and why they've allocated so much to this area and why Casey's put this much into marketing. So we're just working to help people know where to go, how to get it, things like that.
Councilmember Stanley, do you have additional questions?
I have a few more questions, yeah. And I appreciate your patience with me. I know this is, but, but I, I don't have any other platform to speak on, and I wasn't given this information until recently. And so I, I really appreciate you taking the time to answer this, Casey. So none of this money ever reimburses to any kind of hospital, doctor? So, um, none of this money ever reimburses to any kind of hospital, doctor, admin, anything like that, right?
No.
Unless we hired a doctor to work in our vaccination clinic, which I don't think we would ever need, but we could.
Well, no, like, no specific, like, hospital or?
But no hospital, right, right. This is all for city, for, for city vaccination clinics.
For personal gain, if that's what you're asking about.
Right. And I'm just trying to eliminate any kind of conflict of interest. Uh, obviously, if, if I'm not accepting any money and I tell you, "Hey, I want everybody to get vaccinated," I think you would trust that. But if I'm being paid to say that, I would hope you would not trust that.
And that is...
Um, and I know that's written in this report. Uh, and, and in, as a civic leader, am I required to promote this in any way if, if I were to vote for it?
I don't believe that you are.
Y'all don't have to do anything.
Um, I'll only say that just because, um, it outlined trusted messengers, you know, in the community, and just said, "Community and civic leaders." Um, so, just a couple more questions, uh, you know. Do we have any, do we have any failure in this? What, what if we take this money and we spend all the money, but, but we just don't increase our vaccination percentage? Do, do we owe any of this money back? Is there any consequence, uh, on this reimbursement where we couldn't get reimbursed?
No, because we, we will, um, the state will typically sends, like a, like a report, either quarterly or monthly or, you know, biannually, kind of however they submit those or send us those reports, and we would report our progress back to the state. So, it's not, it likely won't be based on, like, the, the absolute number. It will be based on our activities towards the grant, is how other grants have been in the past. We, we haven't received...
It's not performance-based, it's just a, uh, an activity-based.
Activity-based. So, it would be like, um, you know, like, each of the different sections would have a, a reporting metric associated.
Yeah. Well, I would love to see us go back to town halls and different dialogues that are outlined here, neighborhood association meetings, things like that. Um, especially that we know way more than we used to. So, uh, I know that I wasn't here, uh, to vote in favor of the original grant, um, that was applied for, I guess. And, um, I'm given an opportunity to support or not support this, and I just want to, you know, reiterate, we've learned a lot in 18 months. And so, I know that I personally am doing things different that I wasn't doing 18 months ago. And I think we, as a council, have an opportunity to do things different if we chose to. And so, um, in this grant, uh, looking at this, my final question, and then I'll leave it alone. The City Readiness Initiative, our CRI program, is any of this tied into any of these grants? Or are they totally standalone, separate?
These would be totally standalone, separate grants.
Okay. Um, once again, I really appreciate you answering these questions and, and letting me, uh, get all that out there. I think that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Counsel, any other questions on item P?
I got a, I got a question. I think it's related to that. I see advertisements on TV, like, "Polaroid," and, 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 "Encourage people to get vaccinated." And I know people have it. Can you hear me now? Are we making any net in those that have not been vaccinated?
Yes. You know, we have, um, we've moved past the 40% mark. We're probably closer to 45% now. So, it's, you know, certainly slow but steady progress. And so, um, anything that we can do to, um, kind of bolster that, I think, will be really important.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. Councilmember Stanley and Smith, thank you. At this particular time, I will call for the motion on item P on the consent agenda for the, to approve the COVID vaccine round four grant funding in the amount of $8,572.24.
Second.
$24, that is, I'm sorry.
That's what I was going to say.
Do we need a motion, or did you make the motion, Mayor Protem?
Well, I guess I actually made the motion since, uh, since, uh, Councilmember Sauer seconded the motion. All those in favor by a sign of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
That motion passes with a 3-0 vote.
3-1.
3-1 vote, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to the non-consent, uh, items. Item 3A, which is consideration of ordinance number, uh, 7938. And this item, uh, has been pulled from the agenda at the request of the applicant. So, it will show up on the, uh, October 12th meeting, okay? So, we'll move forward with the next, uh, agenda item, which is 3B, consideration of resolution 09-28-21-4. Mr. City Manager?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mayor Protem. Item 3B is the consideration of the meet and confer agreement with the, uh, City of Amarillo and the Amarillo Police Officers Association. This, you, at first, let me just say, this has been a, uh, a, a multi-month, uh, negotiation. Uh, and I, I, I want to compliment, uh, the association, their representatives, and their entire membership. You know, it's, uh, as, as the president of the association said, you know, everyone brings a variety of perspectives to the table. Uh, but the proof is in how we work together, uh, with different perspectives to come to a workable way forward where everyone's on board. Uh, so, uh, I, I just want to recognize, uh, uh, every person that, that worked on behalf of the association and also on behalf of the city, and both of those are the city. So, that, that's where you get a little bit of, of, uh, contradictory verbiage, but, uh, just couldn't say enough about the, uh, work that the association put into this and the, the, uh, the approach of the entire membership, uh, as they've considered approval. So, of consideration is the agreement. Uh, it's a three-year agreement, uh, commences October 1st, 2021, so, uh, almost immediately. Uh, it will expire September 30th, 2024. It has a one-year potential extension, evergreen extension, uh, which would remain in effect in, uh, until the earlier of the date it's replaced by a new agreement or September 30th of 2025. Counsel has discussed this on numerous occasions in executive session, and what we have in front of you right now is exactly consistent, uh, with all of the most recent discussions in executive session. Uh, the agreement includes, uh, increases to base pay of 3% in year one. That's this year, this coming year. 5% in year two, uh, and 4% in year three. It, uh, makes modification to supplemental shift differential pay for officers, officers working evening and night shifts or, or weekend days. Uh, that, those will increase from 2.5% to 3% of their base salary, and that will happen in year one. Uh, the city will provide an annual buyback program, an annual leave buyback program, allowing officers to elect to sell back 40 hours or one week of annual leave at the officer's base hourly rate if they have more than 10 years of continuous service with APD. That program would begin in year two and also exist in year three. So, in years two and three, they would have the ability to sell back one week of annual leave or 40 hours of annual leave. Uh, that equals about 1.9% of an officer's base salary. So, it, in it, in and of itself, is a, I'm not going to say substantial or, uh, momentous or anything, but it is a, a, a noteworthy component of the compensation, uh, component of the agreement. Uh, council has the authority to make adjustments to the agreement in the case that a voter, voter approval tax rate election modifies the city's ability to meet its funding under the agreement. This is going to be something that every city across the state that has meet and confer or collective bargaining agreements with their associations, be they fire police or general fund, or general employees. Uh, but it is a reality that we face, uh, from 2019 on. So, uh, we will have, we, we, all, all I say there is, we had to write in an accommodation, uh, in the event that any component of the agreement, uh, was subject to a voter approval tax rate election, and that election failed, we had to be able to acknowledge that we have to be able to make sure that whatever our agreement is, we have the ability to fund it. So, uh, either our funding changes as a result of the agreement or the agreement changes as a, as a result of unsuccessful voter approval tax rate election. So, that is, in a nutshell, the agreement. You have the agreements in front of you. Uh, you, you have seen the, the high points of the agreement as we've gone through, uh, this, these last three or four months. Uh, but you have not had the agreement in front of you except for just this morning. So, uh, I understand if you have any questions or if you, uh, uh, need me to do any, to get you some feedback right now. The association has approved the agreement. Uh, so, once council approves it, this will go into effect, uh, effective October 1st. So, is there any questions that I can answer or a city attorney can answer? Uh, or anybody else that was, uh, a party to the, these negotiations?
Okay. Counsel? Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. At this time, I'll call for a motion.
Uh, Mayor Protem, I move for the adoption of resolution 09-28-21-4, uh, considering the approving and ratifying the meeting, meet and confer labor agreement between the City of Amarillo and the Amarillo Police Officers Association.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Sauer and a second by Councilmember Smith. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This item passes with a 4-0 vote.
Ms. Mayor Protem, if I can jump in just one more time.
Yes, sir.
I cannot say how proud I am to be a part of this team, and I'm not talking just one side of the table or another.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I am very, uh, in, in, in heart, um, my heart is, is full. Not because it was easy, uh, but because of we, our conversations were characterized by respect, a very spirited exchange of, of ideas and, 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 uh, perspectives, uh, but a lot of listening.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, um, it, it sounds pandering at this point, it's all been approved, but, uh, we have a great team in, inside this organization. I appreciate the support that council's given to this negotiation. Uh, and, and I do want to say to our, I, I'm looking at officers in the room, uh, but, but, but to our team, uh, over at APOA and at APD, uh, thank you for, for, for everything you've done and will do, and, uh, for the, for the, uh, character of this process.
Thank you, and I appreciate that as well. And I certainly appreciate our officers and you, uh, working with them, because I know you've spent many, many hours on this agreement for us to get to the point where we are today. And I do know that we do have an, an assigned, a signed agreement, you know, by the, uh, APOA. So, thank you. Moving on to agenda item, uh, 1C, which is consideration of resolution 09-8-21-5. Mr. City Manager?
Right. Uh, Ms. Mayor Protem, we've got Michael Schub, Michael Koshuba, Director of Parks and Recreation, to present the item. Uh, this is something that we've seen a number of times recently in, in, uh, as discussion items. So, Michael's going to give us a real high-level or briefer presentation. But we're absolutely ready to answer any questions council has. We can go into as much or as little detail as you want. I know that one question's been asked of me is, does this authorize me to sell property or to, uh, divest ourselves of parks? And, 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 uh, it is a, it is a real question that, that people have had, and I want to pay it the, a, a very serious level of respect to say that, uh, nothing in this agreement, uh, nothing, I'm sorry, it's not agreement, but nothing in this plan would authorize me to sell property. In fact, it's not our goal to sell property. Um, uh, it, it is something that we legally could do, um, with non-dedicated parkland, and with dedicated parkland could only do with a vote to approve that sale. However, uh, anything that we would do, be it a lease, uh, to a private entity or a sale or any divestment of a park property, uh, if it's in an area where we have multi, where we have multiple service circles overlapping, um, all of those would come to council for final approval. So, I just wanted to make sure that, that y'all knew that, that, that none of this is designed to sell park city property or to divest city property with, without council's, uh, uh, authorization. Really, input and then authorization, but we certainly wouldn't do it without any of council's input. Couldn't legally do it without any of council's authorization.
Welcome again.
Mayor Protem and counsel, Michael Koshuba, Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, the item before you today is a resolution to approve the Parks Master Plan as the official document for the department and, uh, as a guideline for future growth development, redevelopment of the city's park system. Obviously, this is kind of the culmination of a couple of years of work specifically on the master plan, uh, but following on the tails of the asset management plan. So, uh, the asset management plan, a lot of the information that we took was, uh, utilized in, in the plan itself. Um, I think the thing that's most important about this plan, I think the thing that I'm most proud about is the amount of community engagement. Uh, from the initial survey, we had almost 2,400 people fill out the survey. Uh, when we did the prioritization challenge, we had another 6,900 people fill out the, the, the information. And then, obviously, the community solutions meeting, which had approximately 270-plus people show up. Uh, numerous hours have been spent by our park board. I want to recognize our park board chair, Mr. John Ingerson, and, uh, park board member, Mr. Jeff Brain, um, as well as the strategic planning, uh, subcommittee of our Parks Department, who spent numerous hours on this. So, uh, that's Luke Austin, uh, Mr. Jeff Brain, uh, former board member, Ms. Angela Harney, uh, former council member, Elaine Hayes, who sat on our board, um, Mr. Eric Hunter, and Mr. John Ingerson. So, that's our strategic planning subcommittee that spent a lot of time reviewing this and really helped, uh, give direction to this plan. Um, obviously, we presented this last, uh, council meeting, and we'd be happy to walk through any questions that the council has. I do want to walk through just a couple of final changes that were made. Um, so, in the, the document, uh, and we updated the, the tables that reflected the 2019 asset management plan, plan numbers, which have been updated to current numbers. Um, under chapter five, table 15, we did add, um, the request, or the, the recommendation for an additional capital projects manager, um, to be determined. Um, again, the hiring of a beautification, um, coordinator. There was some clarification in some of our maps that Wonderland is not owned by the city, but it is a lease and is within a city park. Uh, there was a couple corrections to the acknowledgements. Um, there was the addition of some figures and tables and maps up at the front, and then there was just some minor typos, uh, inconsistent text, formatting errors, et cetera. Um, the park board had held a special meeting on the 20th to consider this, uh, as a recommendation to council. It was unanimous 9-0 vote, uh, and so, we'd be happy to answer any questions related to this plan.
Counsel, questions for Michael? Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
This time, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I move to adopt resolution 9-28-21-5, approving the Parks Master Plan as the official document for the Amarillo Parks and Recreation Department. Its appointed board and city administration as a guideline for future growth, development, and redevelopment of the City of Amarillo's park system.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Sauer and a second by Councilmember Stanley. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes with a 4-0 vote. Moving on to agenda item D, which is consider approval for tax abatement agreement. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Ms. Mayor Protem, we have Kevin Carter, uh, President, CEO of AEDC, here to present the item, and this is...
I'm in a room, that's all I have to say.
People start walking around, walking out when you get up. Uh, but this is the, uh, the, the abatement that goes with the second reading that we did on consent for reinvestment zone 14. So, Kevin, take it away.
All right. All right, counsel, thank you for having me here today. Um, before I get started, uh, I'm here on behalf of Encompass Health. Uh, Encompass Health owns a national network of inpatient, uh, rehabilitation hospitals. Maybe? There it goes. Maybe. Uh, home health and hosp, hospice agencies. Encompass is the largest owner and operator of inpatient rehabilitation facilities. Uh, they have a national footprint that includes many hospitals in 39 states and Puerto Rico. Also, Encompass, uh, was recently named as one of Fortune 100, of one of the Fortune 100 best companies to work for. Um, with that, I want to introduce John Wells. He's here today from, uh, Encompass Health, from their corporate office in Alabama.
Welcome, John.
Where about in Alabama?
Uh, the opportunity that we have, Encompass Health wants to build a 40-bed new rehab, inpatient rehabilitation hospital, uh, in the Point West section of the Amarillo Medical Center. They currently have 67 members, um, that work here in the Amarillo area currently, but... They currently have 67 members that work here in the Amarillo area currently, but they want to expand that and build a new rehab hospital. The construction would include a 47,000... 47 point, 47,745 square foot facility on 7.29 acres. It would be a $26 million capital expenditure on the building and the furnishings. 90 new FTEs would be created in year one, and that would increase to 110 additional on top of the 67 that they have by year five. The proposal that we're presenting today would be to ask you for a six-year, 60% abatement on the real and business personal property. This is in line with what we've done with the past two healthcare facilities, one for BSA and then one for Texas Oncology that you approved in the last three years. Some of the numbers that we would have, if you were to do this 60% for six years, the net benefit to the City of Amarillo would be $3.7 million. The benefit's about $7 million when you take in the taxable sales on a yearly basis, also, you know, water usage from new residents, and then you factor out the cost that it takes to do those services. So a $3.7 million direct benefit to the City of Amarillo as an entity. That would create 110 new jobs at $60,000 per year, 92 spinoff jobs with that. That's a $51,000 average on the 202 new jobs that would be created, not counting the $26 million investment. The impact over the 20-year period with the 202 additional employees, not counting the 67, would be $11 million annually in new payroll and around $3 million in taxable sales revenue for our area. So over $300 million economic impact over a 20-year period, so $15 million economic impact annually. Huge project. We're very excited about Encompass wanting to build that facility here, and I would certainly answer any questions that you might have, Counsel.
Counsel, questions for Kevin?
Okay, thanks.
Guess you've done a wonderful job.
Everybody's asleep. Thank you.
Okay, at this particular time, I entertain a motion for Agenda Item 3D.
Mayor Protim, I move to approve the tax abatement agreement between City of Amarillo and Encompass Health, Texas Real Estate LLC, Encompass Health Rehabilitation Hospital of Amarillo LLC, and Park West Corporate Center Limited.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Sauer and a second from Councilmember Smith. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? This item passes with a 4-0 vote. Thank you so much, Kevin, appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item 3E, which is Consider Award Professional Services Agreement, Engineering Services Project Number 411739, Partnership for Development Progress. Mr. City Manager?
Right, Ms. Mayor Protim, thank you. We've had a number of meetings recently, both as Community Solutions and in discussion here at City Council, about the Partnership for Development Progress. So this is the contract for Phase 1 of that. Kyle Sneeterjohn, Director of Capital Projects Development Engineering, is here to present the item and answer any questions from council. Kyle?
All right, thank you.
Hello, Kyle.
Hi. I'm privileged to be the last on presenter, but you guys still have work to do, so, but... All right, so as Jared mentioned, we've, you guys have seen the Partnership for Development Progress, been involved with multiple meetings, which I'll talk about later, but just in general, for the benefit, the Partnership for Development Progress came about through lots of input from our development community, and what, one of the resounding items we heard was that, oops, sorry, that's, that the lack of existing and expanding infrastructure is starting to limit the amount of developable lots within the city limits and actually push development from inside the city limits outside the city limits. And so that was kind of the emphasis that brought most of this conversation about. The mission statement of the, of this is to create a development-focused, solution-based approach for continued and sustainable growth of the city through this development process. And so one of the ways we outlined to meet that mission objective was to have those stakeholders' meetings. We've met with the developers on 8/17, the Builders Association and other builders on 8/24, lots of subcontractors, the Realtors, as well as the bankers and apartment association groups there on those dates. What we're here to talk about today is Item Number 3, which is to hire a consultant, hire a third-party observer to come in and take a good look at what we're currently doing and bring us new ideas and new fresh vision on things that may be unique to Amarillo and may be in our best interest, and maybe other ideas that would expand those ideas and move things forward. Then lastly, additionally, we will appoint a Citizens PDP Guidance Committee and then utilize the expertise of that and ideas of our consultant, as well as that input from those stakeholders and that Citizens Committee to identify our path forward. So today, the contract for professional services is with Kimley Horn. Kimley Horn is an engineering firm across, all across the state of Texas that has done a lot of this type of work. They have worked with over 40 cities specifically on impact fees, but additionally examining rough proportionality policies and master planning policies for multiple cities across the state and likewise across the nation. They've also worked on bomb preparation-type projects as well as design standard projects to formalize the development process in multiple communities and bring a wealth of information to this team. Last one, sorry, flipping quickly. One forward, there we go. Ultimately, that's the last slide. Staff is recommending the award of that contract to Kimley Horn, and I will entertain any questions you may have.
Counsel, questions for Kyle?
So I have a few, Kyle.
Sure.
So how, how many consultants did we look at?
So we did this selection off our pre-approved selection criteria list. There's approximately 15 different engineers who had submitted RF proposals to be included in that, in that selection list, and that's what we used to select Kimley Horn.
Were they rated on criteria? And Kimberly Horn, what was her rating?
Sure. So Kimley Horn, well, yes, they are all rated by a three-person panel, and they're rated on their submitted qualification.
They're not all, the ones that submitted a response are rated, right?
So all 15 submitted a response to the pre-qualified list. That's correct. And we did not ask, one of the things that three-person panel can do is ask for additional information from any one of those 15 candidates and do additional evaluation. That was not done. The initial scoring of those, of the three-member panel identified Kimley Horn as the frontrunner.
So we don't have necessarily scoring on like, well, we had these other three, and they ranked 32 and 30, and she had a 34, or do we have that?
And it's not a she, so just a minor correction, just because I know they're listening too, so, but that's not a problem.
Good correction, thank you.
Absolutely. So the Purchasing Department oversees all of that. I was one of the members of that three-person panel, and so I don't see, specifically do not see the scoring criteria of the other two members, but that runs, our Purchasing Department oversees that scoring criteria, and they do have those, and they can be requested.
I love when you read fast. Kimberly Horn is not who we're hiring, so, Kimley Horn.
Kimley Horn, yes, sir.
Appreciate the correction on that, it's very helpful. So do you or does anybody else know their viewpoint on impact fees and specifically to limits? So I'm curious if they had 41 cities that they'd done successful rollouts of impact fees. What's their philosophy in how limited is this impact fee, or what other opportunities do they bring to the table to where you avoid those impact fees and you look at other ways to fund and finance these needs?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. I mean, not, and I would say specifically that I, having read and researched a lot of the ones on that, on that list, I would say that none of them are the exact same. Each implementation has, has a flavor, a community flavor, if you will, that fits and molds to the demands and the wants and desires of that community. They, as a company, they don't have a stance on impact fee, and that's one of the main, that's one of the benefits of bringing in an external consultant in this type of, type of exercise and type of program, in that maybe biases that are inherent to, I wouldn't say that it comes off as combative, but in general, my staff as engineers are lots of times in positions where we are going back and forth with the development community or the building community, and that just brings about inherent feelings of, and the like. And so it's beneficial to bring in this third party and take a, take a third look at it or a third-party view of the situation. You know, rough proportionality is another funding mechanism and an alternate method, and they specifically have made recommendations where rough proportionality fits the community flavor of a particular community versus straight impact fees. And so I have full confidence that they bring the breadth of that experience to us.
Really, really for them, it's a math problem. What all things have, so the development process is going to generate certain costs. What all costs have to be paid for through that? What are all the available options to pay for it? And then they'll, based on our input and our community's input, our stakeholders' input, our taxpayers' input, they'll put in, they'll develop a recommended strategy to accomplish, to generate those revenues to pay for the required costs. So they really don't have a perspective on should we do it or shouldn't we do it, or should there be a max, or should there be a min, or anything like that. It's really, what do we, what do we have to do financially through the process? What are our options to pay for it? And then they're going to put together an equitable distribution of those costs across all the different functions that are generating the need for those costs.
Additionally, you can, you'll note that this is identified as Phase 1. We do anticipate an explorer, or a development stage where they are given direction and they develop certain things, and then additionally, an implementation phase. And yet, we did not specifically indicate the scope of that work other than to a vague outline such that, such that it is going to be determined by this process, even the next phases.
Man, very helpful. Have we ever worked with this engineering firm before several times, or in what capacity?
Yep. So the most recent, the most recent, it was tied directly to some of the conversations today. Kimley Horn facilitated our multimodal plan for the MPO, and that was probably the absolute most recent work that they've done with us, specifically in this planning type and master planning and function. Kimley Horn has done multiple design projects through the Engineering Department, including water and wastewater projects and transportation projects, drainage projects, so we have worked with them significantly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. I'll call for a motion on Agenda Item 3E.
I'd like to move to award the contract for engineering services for Phase 1 of the Partnership for Development Progress project to Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., in the amount of $166,400.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Smith and a second by Councilmember Sauer. All those in favor, please, sign of saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That item passes with a 4-0 vote, and I appreciate everybody being in attendance today for our council meeting. This concludes the business portion of our meeting. I'm going to ask the city attorney if he, attorney, if he would be so kind to read our language as we move into the executive session.
Yes, ma'am. Glad to, since the Texas Open Meetings Act closed session, the Amarillo City Council was announced on September 28th, 2021, at 4:17 PM under the following authority, Section 551.087, discuss commercial financial information received from an existing business or business prospect, which the city is negotiating for the location or retention of a facility or for incentives the city is willing to extend or financial information submitted by the same. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. No votes will be taken in this meeting. We will come back out and adjourn once we have concluded our executive session. Again, thank you so much for being here.